Hey, good afternoon. Today is June 3rd, a little after 3 o'clock, getting started a little late, so we apologize. And so this is Rowan County Commission Meeting. We're glad that you're here, glad to see some guests here today. We normally have you stand and introduce yourself. We won't do that today. Actually, we don't do that, but we just might. So, we hope you're having a good day and hope you enjoy your time with us today. So, we begin our meetings as we do every time and have done for a long time, as elected bodies do across the whole country. We begin with a couple of things. We're gonna have a pledge of allegiance and then we have a prayer. It's called a solemnizing prayer. We're gonna have our chaplain come forward. He leads these. These are for the commissioners and not for you. And so, we take very seriously what we do here and so seek wisdom as we know best in order to make decisions that are in the best interest of the county. So, chaplain, if you'll come forward and commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Dear Lord, thank you again that we can come to you today in behalf of the county commissioners, Lord, and we ask you to be with us in this meeting today, Lord, give them the wisdom they need. You said, "If any man lacks wisdom, let him ask of God which give us liberty and a brave to all." So, I pray you give them the wisdom they need, thank for the work they do, thank for the work that's been put in this meeting we fixing to have. Be with us now in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inhales) Pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. Doing double duty today, we appreciate it. So, this is our first meeting of June and we're in budget time right now. So, at 1:00, we had a budget work session for the commissioners and had some folks here that spoke. So, this is, again, this is our first meeting. We meet at 3:00, the first meeting of the month. So, we won't actually adjourn at the end of this meeting. We'll just recess and then we'll, we've got some other work to do, but at 6:00, we'll come back and come out of recess and have a public hearing on the budget. And then, we'll decide what to do after that, whether we'll vote on the budget tonight or wait for two weeks, but, so this meeting will not adjourn until after our 6:00 meeting tonight, so just letting you know ahead of time. All right, so you have the agenda before you. I'm not aware of any additions or deletions we need to make. If not, then can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Say aye.
Aye.
The minutes for May 20th were provided for us. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
Then, we have the consent agenda. Items A through G been provided. Had time to look through those and so do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public comment period. Let's see, we've got two folks. Mr. Ronnie Smith. Ronnie, we've missed you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I did miss the last meeting.
You have 20 minutes.
I have 20 minutes. God bless you. I know it's been a busy day. Y'all have so much on your agenda, so I'm gonna be like a good preacher. I'm gonna be real brief and I'm gonna limit my topics to really three quick points. I have some good news today. Number one, I'm here to represent Davidson County, believe it or not, and I provided our county manager and our chairman of the Rowan County Commissioners with a personal invitation to every citizen in Rowan County. Please join us on June 21st at 10:00 a.m. on a Friday morning for the ribbon cutting for what we hope will be one of the largest and finest parks in the state of North Carolina, the Yakon River Park. The ribbon cutting will take place on the Wilcox Bridge. This is a collaborative effort with Spencer Salisbury, we hope Rowan County and Davidson County. You have all the details in front of you and I'll pass this one extra along. That will be a marvelous event and we hope and pray we'll have a good turnout that day. Secondly, I want to thank several of you, particularly Greg and Mike. You were at the Memorial Day Ceremony on Monday at the Salisbury National Cemetery. God bless you for that. We were also prepared that day to dedicate the Rowan County Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall and due to unforeseen circumstances, that has not happened after nine years. Please, 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 read the white sheet I passed out to the county manager and also to our chairman of the county commissioners and let's please get behind that monument. My last comment is a very good one. FOR, F-O-R, Friends of Rowan, was implemented recently. It has taken off like a rocket and we're now funding many Rowan County organizations through a 501(c)(3) community service organization and we hope that will certainly add to the lifestyle of every citizen in Rowan County. God bless you. Thank you for all you do for us.
Ronnie, thank you. Michael Taylor. You gonna pray again?
If I need to, I will. I know in just a little bit, number eight, I'm the presentation of Sheriff's Department Pay Study. I want to say that it's a privilege to stand up in behalf of the Rowan County Sheriff's Office. I thank the Lord for our sheriff, wonderful job he does and officers, what they do. It's my privilege, this very month, is my 26th year serving as volunteer chaplain at the Rowan County Sheriff's Office. I'm proud of these men and women and what they do and I'm gonna say that I'm in far a race for each one of these and what they do. They deserve it, putting their lives on the line of duty every day and I appreciate them and what they do. So, I'm gonna stand tonight and say in this. Please vote in favor of this.
Thanks, Chaplain. All right, that's all we had signed up to speak. Move on to item number three and that is a public hearing for Front Creek Church Road name request. And Aaron, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Get this pulled up here. All right, we got the public hearing for the Front Creek Road naming. This is the I-85 Service Road located at the 1300 block of Long Ferry Road. Just kinda taking a look at the area. This is the location where the tree view site was. So, just an aerial look. We got right here is the interstate with Long Ferry Road and just off of it is the I-85 Service Road. And as of now, it doesn't have an official name. The service road's just kinda been a placeholder and now that we actually have a development happening on the tree view site, we need a road name for this road. So, we reached out to the developer of the tree view site and asked them for a potential road name and they came back with Front Creek Road. And since it is a state maintained road, we have to go through the Board of Commissioners for an official adoption of the road name. So, today, we just need a public hearing and then approval or denial of the name.
So, this is a name North Point came up with?
Yes, we've reached out to the developer. They talked to Chewy and this is what they came up with.
They wanted you like Chewy Boulevard or?
Yeah, we were, we kinda felt the same way. We were like, well, if this is, this is what they came up with.
Hmm. Wonder if they were asked about that? Did they talk to Chewy?
We've, we sent out to them, asked them to get Chewy's opinion and Front Creek was the only, they came up with three names and Front Creek was the only one that even worked with our current addresses or our current road names, so this is the one we're presenting today.
Hmm. Okey doke.
Yep.
For $55 million, I would think that we ought to consider Front Creek.
Is that right? That's what they want? Okay. I'd have tried to honor them somehow, but I got you. Maybe they don't like being in the limelight. Okay, so I appreciate that and so we'll do that. We will open up the floor. We'll have a public hearing. If anyone would like to talk for or against, you just have an opinion on the road name or if you'd like to make a motion, we call it Chewy Boulevard or anything, let me know. All right, I don't see any, so we'll close and we'll abide by the request. And do we have a motion to approve the name of Front Creek Road?
So moved.
Second.
Favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. You're next. We have a public hearing for Z-05-19.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Z-05-19 is a request from Gregory Childs to rezone his 3.73 acre parcel from RA with an agricultural overlay to just regular RA. And this is right there at 4215 Long Ferry Road. It's located pretty firmly in the Area 2 of the Eastern Area Land Use Plan, which does recommend medium density residential development in that area. And just taking a look at the zoning, the current, it's currently zoned RA with the agricultural overlay, which is pretty restrictive. We only have these few handful of uses allowed out there. And the biggest one that the current owner is looking to get is to do a minor subdivision, which currently is not allowed with the agricultural overlay. And so, by moving it to just a plain RA, it would allow him to do that. So, just taking a look in the vicinity, you can see it's just a single family dwelling. It's got a barn in the back there and then otherwise mostly rural except for the storage facilities over here. And then, Long Ferry Road has a design capacity of 11,300 vehicles a day and as of 2015, it was at 1,700. Then, back in April, we had the planning board hearing on the matter and they adopted the following statement of consistency. The Z-05-19 is consistent with the Eastern Area Land Use Plan based on the requested RA district being consistent with the RA districts in the area and with the request being reasonable and in the public interest. And then, today, we just need a public hearing, adopt a statement of consistency and then approve denier table Z-05-19. And then, both me and the applicant are here today.
Okay. All right, any questions for?
So, being that this is a parcel that already has a home and other buildings on it, where does the agriculture fit in? I don't see any fields or?
If we go back, it was part of a much larger district.
Yeah.
That this parcel is no longer really affiliated with. And it's just been kinda tied up with the rest of this larger lane, this larger overlay district here.
So, we don't have a minimum acreage for RA designation?
RA doesn't have any kind of minimum acreage, but the overall district here is about 80 acres.
And when you change from R-A-A-O to just plain RA, what does that do to the taxes, property taxes?
I'm not sure what that does to the tax value.
Thanks.
All right, anything else for Aaron? All right, if not, you said the applicant's here. Would he like, would he like to add anything?
Yes.
Okay.
Aaron, I would add all.
All right, thank you very much. All right, if there's no other questions from the board to Aaron or the applicant, then we will open the floor and we'll have a public hearing for Z-05-19. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add to this? Any comments? Or if not, then we'll close the public hearing and the first thing we would need is I'll read, I'll read the statement of consistency as a, as a, make this as a motion. Z-05-19 is consistent with the Eastern Area Land Use Plan based on the requested RA district being consistent with RA districts in the area and with the request being reasonable and in the public interest. And this did go before the planning board and was passed unanimously, so I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion on that? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then do we have a motion to approve Z-05-19?
So moved.
Have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Childs? Thank you, Aaron. All right, Amy Lynn. 4-H presentation. Won all four of them too. All four of the H's.
All the four H's?
All four H's.
I'm sure she'll be able to address them all. It's with great pleasure to introduce the chair and the commissioners, Jasa Cosby. Jasa is our selection this year to go to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Youth Voice Summit in August. Part of that, it requires her to give a presentation and get a picture with all of you. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jasa because she's one of our most outstanding 4-Hers and we're excited to present her today.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hey, my name is Jasa Cosby and I'm 15 years old. I go to East Rowan High School and I'm a member of Rowan County 4-H, obviously, but I'm just coming here to talk to you today about how 4-H has helped me, how it can help others in my role in the youth voice this year in August. I began in 4-H when I was about six years old because I loved horses and the 4-H club I joined was led by a veterinarian, so she was able to broaden my knowledge on this topic of horses a lot and it also gave me many different outlets to be able to show my horses. I got my first horse through 4-H, which is really cool, and I got to meet tons of new people through 4-H as well. Last year, I got to travel all the way to Perry, Georgia for the Southern Regional 4-H Horse Championships and I got to meet new friends from all over the southern United States, from states like Louisiana, Florida, and Texas, which was really cool. I think it'd be cool like if I go back there another year to be able to reconnect with those people. That's what I like about 4-H is that it allows me to make connections and then every year, every few months, I get to see these people again that I never really get to see. And so, I get to meet people on the county level, on the district level, and on the statewide level, as well as have friends outside of state. There's so many different activities through 4-H that's helped me be able to meet new people, like team retreat and winter enrichment. And it's, I've really enjoyed these opportunities to meet new people and make new connections. 4-H has also helped me with many important life skills such as public speaking. I would not be able to talk to y'all today if I did not take the speak-up classes at Ag Center when I was little and it's shown me how to effectively make and present a speech. Whenever I go to school, it's also helpful because if I have to give an oral presentation, I don't freak out like a lot of people do. So, that's nice to be able to not have to feel like I'm about to throw up in the bathroom before my presentation. 4-H has also helped me hone my leadership skills. I'm currently the secretary of East Rowan FFA as well as vice president, president of my 4-H club and I've also been elected to leadership roles such as basketball team captain, which was a really neat role. So, these leadership roles, I would not be able to carry out effectively or even be able to do them without 4-H's help through different leadership programs and different activities I've been able to do to teach me how to be a good leader. My role at Youth Voice will be representing Rowan County to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners this year. I'm excited because this is my first time going and I would like just to be able to see how the whole state of North Carolina is represented and represent Rowan County well. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come speak to you today and to be able to go.
Well, Jasa, thank you. And how about if we give her a round of applause?
Jasa, I have just one little piece of information for you. That 4-H can take you a really long way. Orville Redenbacher Popcorn and J.C. Penney Retail, both 4-Hers.
Thank you.
So, do you want us to get a picture with her? Okay, all right, well. It's always good. Fire marshal Deborah Horn. While she's walking up here, Deborah's a client of mine, but she calls me anytime a client of mine has had a house fire, so anytime she calls me for county business, I get nervous because I wonder if one of my client's house is burned, but sometimes she'll just call for something else and so she always begins a conversation with, "Nothing's on fire. I need to ask you about something else." So, I kinda don't like to see her calling me for some reason, but we're glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chairman, Commissioners, I would like to bring to you tonight about Appendix D and the fire code. The fire code has been adopted by Rowan County and the appendices, for them to be mandatory, have to be referenced in the ordinance. If not, it goes back to Chapter 5, which just says that authority having jurisdiction, which would be us, would need to approve it. It doesn't say how wide, how, like, anything. So, what we would like to do is reference Appendix D in our subdivision ordinance. And I believe that you have what would be the changes on file and it just says that it would have to be Appendix D of the most current fire code. As you can see in some of these pictures, since 2007, when the recession came in, we did not have many subdivisions coming into the county and now, we're having several subdivision plans come into the county. And I just wanted to include a few pictures. Depending on what manufacturer of truck, we have found some trucks to be 11, over 11 and a half feet wide and an 18-foot road in a subdivision does not allow for this to happen, if you will see these operations. And you do have to have several feet in between the trucks to operate with the hoses and the personnel. So, we're proposing to use Appendix D, which does not change the width unless it is over 500, between 501 and over 750 feet long, the actual road, the dead end road. Anything up to 500 would still be 20 feet, but you would have to have some turnarounds over 151 foot and I believe that you see that and we can get back to that. But I just want to use a few examples. That's just one catching a hydrant. If a hydrant is there, the Appendix D calls for 26 foot wide, with, just where there's a hydrant, so that that way, a truck coming in can get their water and keep going. And that's just another example. And getting back to Appendix D, I think that you have the entire Appendix D, but right here on the first page is what we have been using and having the problems with. Those cul-de-sacs, we have, if you've noticed Toyota Racing Development on Peach Orchard Road, they went by Appendix D when they were built and they have a wonderful road coming in. We've tested it on South Salisbury's trucks, up to their ladder truck. They turned around in the 96-foot diameter cul-de-sac and had no problems whatsoever. We took several ladder trucks and engines and tankers to other developments and they had to use at least four turnarounds before they could, which is front and back to try and get turned around and go back to the water source. And I will take any questions that you have.
So, what's the standard now? What's the standard now?
It says that it has to go by DOT regulations and it's not mentioned about Appendix D or our office or our code. And we're not changing what it says about DOT because it does need the DOT regulations on the, on the padding itself and things like, the things that DOT does do. But I have spoken with several DOT representatives when we've been working on Yorkshire Farms and other developments in the county and they said that they would maintain it even if we went to the Appendix D. I don't have anything in writing, but during those meetings, they said they would maintain it even if we went to Appendix D standards. What we don't want is there is a development in the southern end of the county and if people are parked on the road, apparatus can't get through there. We've had one incident and they had to enter off two separate roadways just to try and get close and then pull hose from there. So, that's what we want to try to get away from.
Does any of this affect the ISO ratings?
No, sir. It hasn't yet.
So, this is being more restrictive than the NC DOT?
It's making it wider, yes, sir.
Which is more restrictive than what the NC DOT requires?
Right. It is making it wider and the cul-de-sacs wider and the turnarounds, where you have to have turnarounds now for dead ends in Appendix D. I don't believe that, I have not heard where that's in the DOT standards, but it could be. But this would make it to where if you go up to a certain amount of road length, you would have a turnaround, whether that's another road. If it's a dead end road, it has to have a turnaround or these trucks can get to the end of the road and not have anywhere to turn around. And the ambulances in the county are also right around eight feet that we have currently, so it would be for any emergency personnel.
Deborah, is there anything, I assume this is all going forward?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything new?
Yes, ma'am.
Have, have you looked at like when dead end roads are, are being rebuilt? That type of things that they would get widened?
Now, maybe I don't understand your question. I'm sorry. What, if they're?
Roads last for X many years and then you need to go in and kinda rip up all the?
If we know about it, we can ask them to, if it exceeds the length needed for a turnaround.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Has, has, I guess, an obvious question would be, has there been an issue? There been issues in the past?
The only issue we've had is in the development on the southern end of the county and the police department for that municipality had to step in and at least get people off the side of the roads and they're trying to enforce that as well, to get these people off the side of the road. We don't have a problem there with the dead end, but what we had a problem with was the lane being 18-foot wide and then people parked their cars on it and it was hard for school buses to get in, much less emergency equipment.
So, I've got a confession to make. We've been pretty consumed with budget.
Yes, sir.
And so, I would normally, especially in this case, made a lot of calls when we're changing ordinance like this.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I just did not do that. So...
And there's more to the Appendix D besides this, but this was the main focus for right now.
So, this, counsel, this, this, we're, we're not gonna do a public hearing here, are we, today?
No, we, we would need to start this process the way we would do normal text amendments. We would have to advertise for a public hearing. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, do you think it would be prudent to kick this to the planning board and let them put some eyes on it and get some input as to what this would do?
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind that because we, we, as we keep saying, believe we're about to take on some growth.
Right.
And so, not spending the time on this item that I personally would have liked to, I would, if that's what, I think that's a good idea. I don't mind doing that.
Well, that would give us some time to research it and would give another set of eyes to look at this and get some public input on what they think about it before we just pass it off.
Well, I don't think the trucks are gonna get any slimmer. But if you, I mean, have you had any contact from developers that were?
Yes, we've had several developers that we've spoken with and just us talking, they have widened the road to 20-foot, but we think it'd be better if, when they got that ordinance, when Shane or Ed gave them that ordinance, it would say? got that ordinance, when Shane or Ed gave them that ordinance, it would say exactly what's needed or exactly what they need to do, instead of me coming in months later and saying, "Oh, no, you've got to widen that road." I don't believe that's fair to the developers coming in.
Mr. Chairman, I agree. I think we need to look this over, because anytime that you're involved in creating a road for a development, you get into certain areas, you have to have sidewalks, you have to have sewer and water drainage and all of this stuff that gets involved in it, and we need to be, we need to prepare ourselves a little better than I think I'm prepared today to address a situation that could mean a lot to us, especially going forward.
And aesthetically, it does look better. Like I said, Toyota Racing Development used Appendix D, and it looks very good when you pull into that subdivision part.
And Toyota Racing has a few more bucks than some of our developers in this community, so I think we need to, I think we need to be just knowledgeable of what we're passing.
So a couple of ways we could do this. I don't know, maybe Ed could come up or Shane and talk about Planning Board. I don't know that I need to kick it to Planning Board, or maybe we do. Do y'all have any thoughts on this? You want to come up? You're shaking your head.
I think the Planning Board will be happy to look at that. They've looked at many different things. This is definitely on topic to what we're talking about, so there's no harm in looking at the text, doesn't mean we're going to adopt anything.
Okay. Is that okay? So we'll feel better about it?
Sure.
Marshal?
Pleases the board, yes.
Okay. Whatever pleases the court?
The board.
All right. Well, all right, so do we have a, can we just make a motion to send it to Planning Board? I think Craig, Craig's made that.
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have two or three seconds. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Mike, would you like to make a motion that trucks not be...
Any wider.
Any wider from this point on? Okay, all right. Thank you, Deborah. Appreciate you. All right, Shane, performance guarantee for Yorkshire Farms.
So as a board, you don't see too many of these requests, but we had one a couple of months ago with Lighthouse Landing, if you remember, out there on the lake. But essentially, these performance guarantees are some existing improvements that are required that will be financially guaranteed per a form up the developer and working with this board to have in hand and allowing that final plat to be approved by staff. So if you take a look at the screen here, here's a couple snapshots of what we'll be talking about. First, on the left, this is a proposed pond that has been dug, and I'll show you a picture of it here in a second. But one item for Yorkshire Farms out there off Highway 150 would be a water point source is required, so the pond is not totally completed at this point. And also, a cluster mailbox. The postal service now requires, instead of having individual boxes, you have a one-depository for them to come locate your mail. So this area here represents a handicap ramp and a series of cluster boxes. Not all of them are required for this phase, but they will be ultimately for Phase Two and Three, as depicted on the drawing. And this is existing pavement. This would be a new section of asphalt required to have the bump out for folks to come in and pick their mail up. So those improvements are not put in at this point. On the left is a cost estimate that we received from the contractor, which has also been sealed by the project engineer, of what they've identified are the remaining costs associated with this project. It does not include anything related to the water point, which the well has been put in, but this is the current state as of a little over two weeks ago, the pond condition. So there's a few other ancillary items that were not included, but you see a total price here of fifteen thousand. The applicant is proposing the board accept twenty thousand dollars in cash to be deposited for their guarantee, allowing that final plat to be approved. So I think, big picture in the memo that you have, I think it's pretty clear that the folks we're working with, I mean, they've been around a while, don't think there's any doubt they won't complete it, but typically you have a little bit more descriptive line-item fashion that you can match everything up. So if we were to go out and hire somebody different to complete this cost, I could not guarantee twenty would do it. So with that said, that's the request to the board. One minor note here at the end, I should also point out, there's two differences. One, an improvement that's non-water point related, the board can accept, and it's good for twelve months. Anything related to water point source, that has to be completed prior to the first CO issued on a home in the development, and that's the thing I spoke with the county attorney about, too. Really not a very straightforward way of having an insurance policy, if you will, to guarantee that we're not in the middle of being the bad guys in the planning office. But I think the best we could probably do is just have a written guarantee that this is, you know, the understanding between the board, staff, and also the developer, that that won't happen.
This is in the center of the development?
No, sir. I should have pointed that out. This is up Highway 150 and the new entrance road. You may recall from about a year ago, when the board looked at Yorkshire Farms, it was going to be in a swimming pool. It seemed a lot more problematic in working with the fire folks to make that work. There was some concern about the drafting ability with the distance to the road. Also, we have a whole, whole lot more water in this pond, you know, quarter million gallons of water versus forty thousand. But as you're coming from town, you hang a left on the new road, and this is the pond.
And the houses are sitting back in the back here?
Yes, sir. They're beyond, this would be Phase Two off the screen, and then the homes are further down and over.
And what are the projected number of homes out there?
This phase would be forty-eight, and I think it's one seventy total.
At a estimated three hundred thousand dollars apiece?
That I don't know.
That was just, never mind, never mind. Just a lot of nice houses out there, is the point I was trying to make.
Could you take it back to the letter? There you go. So if we're to approve this today, specifically, what would we be, what would that motion say?
To accept twenty thousand dollars to be deposited in our finance department to hold in escrow until the full improvements are in place, certified, and then once that happens, we take that money back out and give it back.
Omo.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Guys, y'all are here. Anything you'd like to add to this? Come on up, yeah.
Afternoon.
Afternoon.
I'm Victor Wallace. And, yeah, we're at the very end of bringing this subdivision to fruition. The mailboxes, the finishing of the pond, which has been finished, it's filling up with water, we're waiting on Duke Power to bring power to the pump, so these are, we've already spent, you know, a couple million dollars on the land, infrastructure, this is just the last little bit. We'd like to get it platted, get some houses started, get some tax base, and get some new folks living here.
Question, have y'all ever built a subdivision?
As my father used to tell me, back when we built, this is about our fortieth subdivision in Rowan County.
Have you ever left one unfinished?
Never. This one won't be unfinished, I assure you.
All right.
If you asked for forty thousand dollars, we'd give you forty.
I think we're okay.
But we thought twenty, given the fact that everything is already there. We've dug the pond, Mother Nature hadn't let it rain, but the Duke Power will hook that pump up, it'll fill up with water, and we'll have a quarter million gallons of water for the fire department.
Well, while you're there, on behalf of the board, we'd like to thank you for investing in Rowan County. It's important for folks to see that the Wallaces are investing. We know you all have a choice of where to invest, and we're going to be a good spot, but frankly, you know, there's places in the past that have been a better investment. The signal that you give that you're investing here locally is a good sign for others, and so on behalf of Rowan County and the county commissioners, thank you for investing.
Well, thank you, and we look forward to filling this property up with homeowners.
All right, and where's the next one? Did you say?
Oh, we always are planning our next spot, but I can't quite announce that yet.
All right. No pressure.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. All right, so we do have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, Mr. Reese, he is the Assistant Director of Piedmont Triad. Is it COG, isn't it? Yeah.
We'll take that.
That's good, that's good. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Been working on this a long time.
We've been at it a little while, yeah.
Four or five years, at least.
Something like that, it seems, anyway.
So thank you for being here.
I appreciate that.
So to let everyone know, I talked about this, I think, last time, but back in 2015, I think we started a pay study for the whole county, right? We finished that and we implemented that over, I think, a three-year period? Or did we do it all at once? Wow, did it all at once. And so in order not to get in that position again, where we have to spend lots of money all at once for the whole county, we've determined we would divide all of the departments in the county into three groups, and we'll study one-third of our departments each year, so that, and essentially, every department gets its own study every three years, and that way we keep up with market. And so there are three departments being studied this year. One is the Sheriff Department, and the other two are...
Board of Elections and Tax Administration.
Board of Elections and Tax Administration. So Matt is here to talk to us about the sheriff's pay study, so welcome.
Thank you, appreciate your time. I'm going to try to follow Jase's lead and not get sick at the podium, so we'll see how that works out for me.
Great.
Yeah. What I've got for you is to sort of walk through what we're going to try to cover, the illustration of grades, and that's sort of the context for most of what you're going to be talking about in terms of moving positions around and being able to get closer to the market. That's the recommendation, to move those from one grade to another. Got a couple of market snapshots that we can get into if we need to. The salary calculator, which is a device that the Sheriff's Department has been using for a while now to place folks in range, you know, a particular method and approach. We're going to walk through that, because that's the real driver behind this particular study. And then look at how that's going to be implemented for this particular study with a max of up to fifteen percent change, in some ways that someone would have been able to calculate a higher increase than that if all of the tenants of the salary calculator had been applied to your current incumbency group, but we've put a cap on that of fifteen percent. And then the calculator going forward, we're going to walk through that, that will have some changes of both moving to a half percent per year experience and up to a ten percent max overall. And then for folks that are not receiving an increase, some folks were calculated using that salary calculator device, they were already at the desired salary for that salary calculator, and for those folks, the recommendation is to have a one-time lump sum payment for those folks that are there. The estimated cost, since we are talking about budgets, wanted to go ahead and get that to you upfront, is seven eighty-nine on that, and we'll kind of talk about what's behind that number and where we are, but wanted to share that with you. So when we're talking about grades, there's my mouse. Come back to me. There we are. So we're talking about grades, the grades twelve through eighteen are where most of the traffic for this study is at, in terms of moving from one to another. So currently, you can see you've got grade twelve that starts at thirty-four-five and runs up to fifty-five-two, and then you see where thirteen and fourteen and fifteen and so forth are. You see on the current, if you look over to your right there, you see where deputy, detention officer, master deputy, down through sergeant are assigned on all of those. So when we're talking about grades, and we're talking about ranges, and we're talking about progression through the range, this is what we're talking about, that each of those grades is in the standard scheme of being five percent apart. Your mens and your maxes are sixty percent apart, that's the progression in range that can occur for folks. So what we're going to be talking about tonight are two different things that are going on this afternoon, are two different things that are going on. For market purposes, and to be sure that we have the, where we need to be on entry levels, moving the classifications further down in the schema of your grade structure. So moving a deputy from grade twelve to grade fourteen. And then the sergeant would go from the grade sixteen to the grade eighteen. Essentially, everything that you have in the sworn law enforcement classifications would move two grades, increase in two grades. That's relative to where we see entry-level markets and what we call internal equity, where current positions are in your pay plan and how we want to maintain value between those positions based on their increasing levels of responsibility and command and control. So that's the vertical movement that we see, to capture where we are in the market. Then we have progression through the range that the salary calculator is going to talk to us about, and we're going to illustrate that in a minute. That progression through the range is meant to try to help with recruitment and retention as well. For the folks that have been recently hired, they have been recipients of that salary calculator. You've got a group that have been with you for a long time and have not been hired under that. That's created a little bit of a disconnect between where folks with longer service have or are placed on that and where folks that have been hired more recently are. So when we were doing the interviews, we're going through that process, one of the reoccurring statements that we heard is, "Well, if, if I was to leave employment today and come back to employment, that I would be hired at a higher rate of pay than I'm currently making now." When we apply the individual attributes, where you would progress me through the range, then I would be at a higher rate of pay than I am now." And that became the most pressing concern for management in the Sheriff's Department, and was the constant refrain that we heard, or the continual refrain that we heard during the study interview process. So that primarily became the focus of where we are. We certainly want to talk about the market and so forth, but it really became the salary calculator that we're at. So we've got a couple of examples of the market and so forth, and you can just sort of see real quickly the snapshot that's there. What this one does is you can see the intersecting blue line that just sort of shows you essentially what we're trying to do is put you at, or in this case with deputy, just slightly above average on that. So even with a two-grade adjustment, what I can tell you is that this is not one where you're going to be the market leader in where you are. We're putting you pretty much on par with where those other folks are, and we can go through those others if we need to, but I know that you've got a lot of distance that you've got to cover tonight. So I want to go on to the salary calculator, and I want to talk to you real quickly about it. So this is the tool that they've been using, so we can illustrate it if you need for me to, if you want me to get into turning on certain functions and turning off functions and seeing how that is. But you can see with changing your salary to up two grades, and then given the level of formal education that someone would have, either no degree, two-degree, or four-year degree, what those percentages would be. In this example, we're showing someone with a two-year degree. And then if they have certifications, and these are standardized certifications that are available through Justice and Standard Training Division, that they would either have basic, intermediate, or advanced. And those are what we call stackable, meaning that I would get two percent for a basic and an additional three percent for intermediate. and an additional three percent for intermediate, and additional four percent for those advanced. So, you can see in this case, the, our test subject here has got a basic and an intermediate. And then, the number of years of experience, giving a full percent for each of those years' experience, what that would come out to be. So, you can see where this individual would have a first starting offer of the thirty-eight, and then how we get up to a forty-two. Now, this would then, um, be capped. This is the current structure, and this is what we're recommending for implementation in the study. This structure would be capped. If we, um, changed that... Helps if I spell that correctly. And then, you can see how the cap then gets applied with that fifteen percent. So, for this study, for the current incumbency, the cap that's being applied to that is the fifteen percent. No individual is getting more than a fifteen percent increase based on that. So, that's the Salary Calculator you've been using currently, with a new addition for this study of a fifteen percent cap. So, then, in the future, what the suggestions from the department are, to move the number of years of experience to a half a percent, and then cap the overall change at ten percent. And I think that's good, that what that will allow you to do is not have, um, as much salary compression, that you're gonna have some limits on what you would offer those folks coming in new. It's been a tool that you've needed to have more aggressively set because of where your salaries have been. Moving your salaries the two grades, and then, uh, with your work to continue to monitor where you are with salaries moving forward, having the half a percent and having the ten percent cap will, uh, place you well with that.
No, you lost me on this.
Sorry.
Start over.
Okay.
Please.
Go back to the original one?
No, 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 just here, yeah.
On this, it's the same as the other. The only change is in this group right here, where you see that instead of it being a full percent for every year of service in the other one, we had four percent, it's now two. And then, where we had a fifteen percent cap before, it's now capped at ten. It's, oh, for new hires, yes. This would be the future calculator, and this would be for new hires going forward, after the study's implemented.
Oh, you've got this pay study for existing officers capped at fifteen percent.
That's exactly right.
But for new hires, it's at ten.
Ready? Okay. So, then, for those folks that are not affected in the pay study, it's, uh, often, uh, a good tool to use to make sure that all of the folks have some, uh, attention given to them in a study. And so, the Sheriff's Department would appreciate consideration of one-time payments, somewhere between the five hundred and the two thousand. And this is, the Sheriff's Department was able to come up with this matrix on their own and had their rationale for it, so I don't want to steal the thunder and hard work from the Sheriff's Department on that. Um, but certainly, I understand where they're coming from in terms of wanting to do those one-time payments for those that are not caught in the Salary Calculator calculations that we previously discussed. So, when we look at where those costs are coming from, if we look at these groupings by rank of deputy through sheriff, uh, what you see in the first column is where you currently are in that grade structure that we discussed. What your current minimum is, is your next column. Then, that two-grade increase of the proposed grade that they're going to, what that proposed minimum would be, and then what that cost is for that particular class, your total...
So, can I stop you?
Sure.
So, when you say a two-grade increase, you're not, that's what it's gonna take to get you up to what the, the market is?
The entry level of the market.
So, yeah, so you're, okay, I got you.
Yep. So, going from thirty-four to thirty-five, landing at, or at thirty-four to thirty-eight, and then with, you see your market entry on that far side of thirty-seven. You can see each of those transactions as you look through there. You've got the cost broken down by each of those departments, and how many incumbents that that's affecting in each of those. And this includes both those one-time lump sums that we talked about, as well as looking at moving the entry level, um, two grades, and then applying the Salary Calculator at that point to where those folks are.
Okay, so, you probably said this, but I'm, I'm just thinking about so much that I may have missed it.
No problem.
What's the difference between the proposed minimum and the market entry?
The proposed minimum is where it falls in your grade structure. So, that's the entry level value for your grade fourteen. That's the proposed minimum. And that's, that's a schema that affects the entire county.
Okay, so, um, they were at thirty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think they should be at thirty-seven, three?
No. I, I think, always in, in a study like this, because of the nature of having a public pay plan and how it's administered, you have these grades. And so, whenever you start talking about the market data, that last column that you see there, you're trying to grab where those market points are, and then applying them back to that grade schema of the fourteen through the thirty-three that you see there. So, the fourteen is the closest to that market point, and that would be my recommendation. Now, that's looking at where we are for, uh, detention officer, and master deputy, and detective, and so forth, taking into consideration the entire occupational family, if you will, of where that is. But certainly, that's the recommendation, is to go to grade twelve, or go to grade fourteen from grade twelve for deputy. That puts it slightly higher. There's others where you're gonna be slightly lower.
Yeah, I think that's, most of us are small-business folks, we don't deal in all this.
Absolutely.
I just tell...
Yeah, this is what we're gonna pay him.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you, right. So, so, we're going from a, a twelve to a fourteen. We, we have studied what the, the competitive amount is.
That's right.
Uh, the, the, so are we saying the bottom of a fourteen is thirty-eight oh ninety-eight?
That's right.
Okay, so, but that doesn't necessarily tell us that if this is thirty-eight oh ninety-eight, that doesn't tell us that to be competitive would be thirty-seven oh ninety-eight.
That's right. What we've done is tried to factor all that in into our recommendation of saying, "This is the best fit for what you have." And it's the difference of having a small, for a small business, you have a small tailored compensation plan strategy, if that is just to give the amount that you think's appropriate for that, versus having a large organization, it's really a holding company of, uh, sorts, and then, having to deal with the fact that that has to be done on a meritorious basis, is one of the standards that you have. Um, and then, that all has to be public. So, that's how we get to having this sort of complicated grade schema and so forth to try to accomplish all of that.
And, and because we don't deal in this every day, and I don't, is HR, well, we don't need to get them up here, but you guys could tell us, that thirty-eight oh ninety-eight, grade fourteen, is that grade fourteen the same across the board for all employees?
Yes.
Okay, so thirty-eight oh ninety-eight isn't just fourteen for the sheriff? It's fourteen for HR, it's fourteen for, okay, so, that's why we don't just adjust it to thirty-seven oh ninety-eight?
That's right.
We got a couple insurance guys here. When someone's TV gets hit by lightning, we give them the next best thing.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Right, so that's, this what we're saying, is we don't have a place for thirty-seven oh ninety-eight. We only have a home for thirty-eight oh ninety-eight, and so, they're gonna benefit greatly by that.
That's right.
Right? Okay, so, in theory, then, if we do all this, they should end up much better?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, if you all are to adopt what is being presented here tonight at the seven eighty-nine, I think you have substantially accomplished what you need to, to resolve the, most of the compensation problems that I heard about in the Sheriff's Department during my time doing interviews.
By the way, this is the first time we've seen this.
Absolutely. And it's a lot of numbers, and it's applied to a system, and so, questions are most appropriate. So, I, I can dive into more, but that's, that's essentially it. So, I don't, I don't want to keep throwing numbers and charts and graphs and things at you.
Just trying to get concept.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. So, that's what it is, that we're trying to target in on where entry level is in your grade assignment, and then, how that's being implemented, what effect does that have? Well, then, we look to the Salary Calculator process that's been used to move folks in range for that. And so, that's where we come up with the, the seven eighty-nine. And then, the, the other component to that is that for those folks who were not, uh, caught in, or were not calculated for, um, an increase based on that Salary Calculator, the Sheriff's Department would like the consideration of the one-time lump sum. Which all of those things are, are within the appropriate pale of good HR practice. There's nothing that's being presented to you tonight that is a real head-scratcher. Those are all the tricks I have for you, and I did not get sick.
That's great. That, that's seven eighty-nine, does that include benefits?
No.
What's the number with, so we'd budgeted seven fifty?
Correct. Fifteen. Well, in the, in the current budget, based on an earlier version, um, salary and benefits, we budgeted, uh, in the proposed budget that you were giving, um, eight hundred and fifteen thousand, because it was going to exceed about sixty-five thousand.
Is that an increase if we adopt this?
No, sir, eight hundred and fifteen thousand is currently in that budget. Anything above that, if it goes above that, then it's, uh, it's addition.
You're already paying some benefits, and I'm trying to get a concept of how much increase.
This goes above that, and we've got those numbers if you want...
Yeah, what's, uh, what's the total with benefits?
So, the total with benefits is, um, I'm gonna round, but it's, uh, nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, which is a hundred and seventy-two thousand greater than what we currently have in the fiscal year twenty twenty budget.
Does that include, uh, these one-time payments for those that are already?
Yes.
It does.
That includes?
Yes, sir.
But, and then, can, the continuation budget for next year, those one-time payments will not be in there, correct? In other words, when we budget next year for this, for the Sheriff's Department, the one-time payouts won't be in that number next year.
Correct.
Because we're just paying them out one time, not each year.
What, what is the one-time payout number, do you know?
The one-time payout number is, uh, hang on.
Forty...
Forty, in salary, it's forty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
But you're gonna have to match some of that in benefits, aren't you?
Yes.
What, what's the to, what's the total?
What's the total? Hang on one second. Let's not let me do that, okay? Oh, it's not taking what I want it to take. Fifty-three thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars. Yes, ma'am. Fifty-three thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars.
And that's part of the nine eighty seven?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your...
Part was easy.
(laughing) It always is. I've always said, "If I can come up with a way that, you know, I don't have to spend the money, and I can deliver the, the study, then you can reach me at my forwarding address."
Good.
Thank you, folks, I appreciate it.
Questions for Mr. Reese, while he's still here? Alright, uh, we know you spent a long time on this, so thank you very much.
I appreciate your time.
Sheriff, you want to walk up now? You want to walk up again?
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. I'd like to say first, thank you for the consideration. I really want to thank Kelly on this. She has worked with me about full-time for the last couple of weeks, it seems, trying to change this, tweak it, make it work, crunch numbers, and, uh, I appreciate her efforts. Couldn't do it without her, so I, I do appreciate that. When I came up last fall and talked to you, what I thought was gonna happen has happened. I'm eight detention officers short, I'm three patrol officers short, and I've got another one in the hiring process with Kannapolis, and one with the Winston Police Department. So, it's, um, we need to do something. I, I think you know that, and I know it's number crunching time, so I thank you for any consideration. Certainly, any questions, if there's something I could explain. Greg, I know you looked at the, uh, start and pay, and then the attributes. We've always needed those attributes to attract lateral transfers.
That, that's the other percentages?
Especially the experience. And we're gonna limit that, so that doesn't leapfrog people coming in over our people we currently have. And by increasing our start and pay, that allows us to do that and still be competitive. So, we've, we've cut back on what we're gonna do because we have moved our start and pay.
Yeah, I ju, I just wanted to understand it.
Okay, I just...
Again, we, most of us don't come from that, you know, Craig had a small...
And, and another adjustment we have made there, um, to match the county's, uh, ongoing policy is, we were doing three percent for an associate and six percent for bachelors, and every other county entity was doing two and four percent. So, we've agreed to adjust to match the county with that as well.
Any questions for the good sheriff? Okay.
I know that's a lot to, uh, to take in, and I know, working with the manager on this, he kinda (laugh) talked about getting this approved and effective immediately, so I think that's up to everybody else. I'm, I'm not gonna push that too hard. I think that's Leslie and the manager, and Kelly and the payroll department. So, uh, I understand all the work that goes into that as well.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, this is a number that would blow most people away.
Um, as in who?
Taxpayers.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
And, and I understand that this has to be done. I guess my question is, is when you look at this, and then you look at the other requests, do you really need the other stuff right now?
The, I'd have to go in and look at item by item. I mean, there's certainly, um, I have told the manager that there's some cuts that I'm willing to make, or things we could look at. Um, I, I understand that. And, of course, there was one plan that was one point four million, and, um, we knew that wasn't gonna go very far, but that would've taken care of a lot of things, because limiting this fifteen percent, there're gonna be some hurt feelings still.
Yeah.
Um, because we limited it fifteen percent. And just for instance, and I'm gonna use mine, and I've told you guys, and I'd already told Aaron to recluse me from this study if we could, under one plan, I would've gotten a twenty-two thousand dollar raise if we didn't limit the attributes. So, you see, some people were gonna get tremendous numbers, and the public would not have understood, people getting thirty-five and forty percent raises. Um, that, that is hard, but I think if we do some things moving forward, we'll still be okay.
Okay, thanks.
So, if this was not limited to fifteen percent, the, the price tag was one point four?
Plus benefits.
Plus benefits.
Yes, sir. That would've, because you got people that are getting raises that would've gotten more, and you've got those twenty-four people on the stipends that would've all gotten raises as well.
I've got another question, Kevin.
Can I, can I just follow up on that? You know, we, we did just go through a pay study, and you guys were part of that.
Correct.
And so, you got a pretty significant bump, right?
That's correct.
So, what has happened? Is it, is it, well, there's some stuff I can, it's just trouble. Is the market changing that much? Because, you know, when, um, when the economy is good, we have a problem getting teachers. We have a problem with, uh, uh, police officers and sheriffs. Certainly, there's politics out there that creates issues with police officers. And so, it, it has the market just, I, I, you know, locally Salisbury went up fifteen percent to address their issue of being understaffed. So, is that what's really happened? Has the market changed that much in the last, say, uh, well, it'd be the last three years? That, that's creating this, this immediate need that's so large?
I think some of the negative in the media. Fewer people are wanting to come into the profession. The, the, uh, the economy definitely drives it. I mean, uh, when Freightliner's laying off, we have a lot of applicants. I mean, um, it, it does work that way. Mike can tell you, how many are you sto, short in Mecklenburg today? Probably three hundred?
About three hundred, yeah.
So, what they're doing then is they're paying, paying more, and that is, so if they're paying more in Cabarrus County and Mecklenburg County, places where our folks can drive to, it's driving, uh, it's driving up demand in our side.
Well, and it's, like I said when I came last fall, I don't, I don't anticipate losing people to Charlotte... Well, and it's, like I said when I came last fall, I don't, I don't anticipate losing people to Charlotte Mecklenburg. But I do Cabarrus, Kannapolis, Huntersville, Cornelius. Winston's kind of a new one, because we don't lose many people going north. I did lose a detective, a deputy this fall to Davidson County, but that was for family reasons, so. But, for instance, Captain Mark and I went to Catawba game yesterday, and we were talking about different personnel problems, and he talked to an individual at a restaurant over the weekend, he's making $43,000 as a welder. Good candidate, but he said, "I just can't do it." So, and that's what you're seeing. The economy does drive what we do, or the, the amount of staffing we have available.
You can't find welders. Well, it is, yeah.
Well, I'm sure that's probably true. It's a tough job, and it's gotten tougher, so. But I appreciate every thing you can do. I know it's not easy. And my clerical staff is not into, in this study, and we'll explain that, but as Kelly and her staff looks at, next year, another third of the county employees, the clerical is not unique to the sheriff's office, you know, that's a position pretty much at every agency the county has, so that'd be a different study.
All right, let me ask you one more question. We're about to administer cost of living adjustments. Are, are we expecting, let's just call it a million dollars, are we expecting to do this 987,000, and then on July 1 also apply cost of living?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
That's already been calculated in the budget.
It's, it's part of the.
Next year's budget, I think.
Okay, I just wanna understand, 'cause, you know, I'm trying to figure, this is getting us up to where we should be.
I think we will be very competitive if we, if we do those things. Now, that won't move the base pay again, or will it? Yes, it will, 2.5%. Yes, it will.
If you don't do that, you're missing a whole year, so we're just losing what we just gained, 'cause we're skipping a year. This was supposed to have been done last year. This was.
This was supposed to be.
Yeah, we approved this, and we've already approved 815,000, so.
We're basically just talking about an increase of 172,000 dollars over what we had already budgeted.
Well, like, I'm, like I say, I'm trying, that makes sense. I'm trying to get in my mind, if, if we approve this and we're, we're where we need to be, then we're adding another 2.5% to that. Seems to me we'll be above where we need to be. Isn't this getting us where we need to be on July 1?
That's true, if nobody else does cost of livings or pay increases July 1. Like Iredale looking at 6% and everybody else is gonna potentially jump. I can't say any specific facts.
I understand.
I will tell you, I'm a numbers guy, and I like crunching numbers. This has driven me nuts because of, there's so many moving parts. How do you fix start and pay compression, take care of people? It's not easy. I mean, it is very difficult.
Well, listen, um, how many departments do we have? How many? 23. 23 departments? I mean, we don't know any that pull over folks and put themselves at risk in the middle of the night of getting shot. We, we don't know many that, uh, risk their lives. I mean, we've got a lot of departments that we, we respect all of them. What you guys, um, and, and ladies do, we are amazed at. So, certainly, we're gonna do everything we can here, because we know the risks that you guys take.
You know the.
And I, and I almost hate to ask questions, but we gotta get it in our head, what it is, you know, that, that we're being asked to do.
You know, the patrol, the patrol.
But now, we got next year, another set of three, and so as we're setting precedent, we gotta make sure we understand what we're doing.
I understand.
But, um, you, you know what, you know how we feel about you and, and your folks, and, um, we, we really appreciate what all you men and women do for this community.
Those patrol folks and the people out there on the streets do a tough job, and it's dangerous, but our detention staff, it's tough. 12 hours inside those walls is tough, so that's a thankless job. I mean, they, that's, that's a hard job.
Okay, well, um, I, I kind of felt that we would, since here's, here's our information that we got for this meeting, so, um, it's okay if we could work through this over the next two weeks like our budget. Are you okay with that?
No.
No?
No, we need to prove it tonight. If we don't prove it tonight, they can't put it in the system for the, to take effect before July 1.
Is that the case?
Hey, Aaron, you told me it wouldn't work, wasn't it?
I may have told you that, but if, if finance says they can, they can.
Kelly, do you see a reason we can't?
We roll paycheck this Friday, so two weeks from Friday. Seven?
Seventeen. Seventeen.
Seventeenth. Correct. Yes, and that, that will actually be paid in July, but it's, it's considered June pay.
Right, 'cause we had a week delay, yep.
Yeah. Correct.
So, that's my main concern.
So, it's, it's doable.
Because, the reason, I know this looks high, but the reason that it's so low is because we can calculate in the COLA. And so, uh, that'll make, you know, that's gonna step a little bit higher for the next. Now, this is the first I heard, all I've heard up to this point is we can't do it, we had to do it today, or we're not. So, if, if the county staff's promising that they can get it done, for it to be effective the 1st of, of July, then, then I don't have a problem with that. I guess we could prove overtime for the people to work after hours or whatever.
I have a question for Leslie. So, the salary increase plus the benefits, and does the COLA come on top of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Based on the new salary?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, does it also include COLA on benefits?
Well, benefits are calculated off salary, so we're talking about, you know, FICA and retirement and 401K, those kind of things. So, yes, when the salary goes up, then the benefits also increase, because they're a percentage of salary.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
But you have some things like healthcare that are already fixed costs that COLA won't apply to. So, you can't take.
Correct.
Exactly a percentage and do that.
Well, I, I did use a percentage, because I didn't factor health costs in, because that's separate. The, the number of employees is not changing, so it's not considered in this, because it's just the increase in pay, and those benefits that are a percent of pay is, are the benefits, you know, when, when I do the increase.
Mr. Chairman?
I don't have a problem voting on this today. I think it was very well laid out, very well thought out, and Mike and I had the privilege of working with the sheriff last week for a couple of hours on this, and I think the system that they put together is as fair as it can be. And, you know, we, we also gotta understand, this is the same system we're gonna have when they do the next third, because it's set up on the different, uh, levels. So, um, I think it's a good plan, the sheriff's behind it. So, so I've got no problem voting on it if, if we wanna move forward.
Well, I agree. You and I were able to attend a meeting that they weren't, and it is a lot of money. You know, my main concern is that it gets approved before, uh, July 1. And I understand if the other commissioners want some time to, uh, study it. Uh, this, this commission's always been very supportive of, um, law enforcement here, and.
Yes.
So, I know they're gonna do, you know, the best that they can, so I don't wanna put you guys on the spot for that. But, coming in here, I was, my understanding, it had to be approved today, so if that's not the case, then as long as it gets approved in time for it to go into effect for the 1st of the year, I personally don't have a problem. I will say that the sheriff talked about not losing folks to Charlotte, but I know we're getting folks from Cabarrus, and so his folks are going to Cabarrus, so it's just a domino effect. You know, some of the things, and I won't go into today, but you can Google the Ferguson effect if you want, and read some of the things about that. It's called the Ferguson effect.
Ferguson effect, okay.
And it's keeping a lot of people who are leaving, excuse me. Leaving or not going into, into the, to the field. I mean, $38,000 is, uh, I mean, if you think what you have to do for that, or you can go sit in an office somewhere and, 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 uh, work at a bank or something. Uh, you know, just last night, I think somewhere near Rock Hill, an officer was shot just on a routine traffic stop, and we know what happened over in, in Mooresville. So, I think we all understand that this is a very, um, unique field, and there's some external pressures right now that come and go. Right now, it's sort of, uh, seems to be there's, at least part of some of the media, national media, there's anti-police, and so people just don't wanna go into the field, so. You know, we're just talking about being able to keep who we got, not just going out and recruiting and bringing in additional. So, like I said, I know this board's always been very supportive of the sheriff's department, and I, and I think it will be again. I would prefer that we vote today, but I know you guys just got that, so I wish that some more information had been given out to you. As long as we can get it in effect before July 1, then, then I don't, I don't mind us moving on. Is that a, you feel the same way, Sheriff?
I know it's a work in progress, and I understand it's a lot to digest, a lot of money. And from our workshop a little bit ago, a lot of people pulling for strings of money, so I, I understand.
It's, uh, it's tough when you try to think of how county government works and with payroll. I worked for my dad for about 15 years and made less money than I did when I went into business with him. So, um, you know, there's a, a lot of inequity in, in pay. There's always inequity in pay, because people are always thinking they're worth more than they are, than they're getting paid. But, we've already, uh, have, what, 85, 90% of this budgeted. And while we're talking about close to a million dollars today, we've already budgeted almost $800,000 for this to, because we knew that we were behind.
Yes, sir.
And we want to, you know, wanna get up to speed on this thing. I, I can do it either way. I'd probably feel, um, a little bit better if I had a chance to study it just a little bit, uh, you know, in the next week or so. We are supportive of the sheriff's department, but, um, we are setting precedent here for what we're doing with all the departments. And that's the only thing that, that gives me a little hesitation about this, is that I need to make sure that the way I'm thinking now is what really is happening on, on, on these things. So, um, that's my opinion, sir.
Anything from you? I mean, I know what my vote's gonna be. I, I, you know, just as a commissioner responsible to the taxpayers, I wanted a little bit of time to look at it.
I understand.
If it's a sense of the board that we can go ahead and vote tonight, then I'm perfectly fine with that. So, maybe a head count. Mike?
Well, like I said, I was able to sit with the sheriff and, and go over some of that, so I, I'm fine with voting for it, but I can understand if you guys need some time to digest it.
You're good.
You know me. Well, I just told you the way I feel.
Big time, yeah. That's a lot of money.
Oh, boy.
That's why you get the big bucks. We don't consent.
That, that works. I'll make that motion.
Uh, how about if you give us just some time to? Well, lemme, lemme ask this. What are you gonna give us? Again, so one knows what we got.
Did Matt, did Matt leave me that?
Presentation of sheriff's department pay study. So, we didn't get any information whatsoever.
Bring the PowerPoint.
Huh?
Bring the PowerPoint.
Yeah.
Do you have Matt's PowerPoint?
Yeah, so if, if, if we say just, you know, we want a little bit of time to study what it is they've done, what is there that you can give us?
We can do what Matt just showed. Basically, lays out the parameters and the, you know, basically, you can take what Matt showed, and you can take each, each employee in the sheriff's office, and you should be able to apply the rules, and they would be able to figure out today what their new pay would be.
Kelly has a chart prepared with every employee's name on it, and what their current is, the proposed, and how much of a raise that is. That, we have that available.
If, if we approve this tonight, is it gonna be effective July 1?
No, it would be effective today.
So, these, so if we, if we don't approve it tonight, then are we missing a pay period?
We're missing one pay period.
You'd miss one pay period.
We don't do it tonight.
If you don't do it tonight. I mean, it was budgeted 7/1, 2018.
Yeah, it's been budgeted for, for a year.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the sheriff's pay study.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Do we have another second? Do we have another second?
Second.
Do we have another second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Anything else you wanna talk about?
I know when to be quiet.
Good man.
You know, there, there's a, uh, there's a saying in sales, "The next guy to talk loses."
Yeah.
Be a good time for you not to say anything. That's the only time I've ever been able to say that to the sheriff. All right, we have, uh, we have a motion in four seconds. Uh, any further discussion? All right, Sheriff, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Also wanna thank you for the work on the monument. I don't think I've been in front of you as a group. Well-attended event, meaningful to the families that lost someone, and, uh, something that Rowan County can be proud of, so thank you for your work on that. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Sheriff. Appreciate you. All right, meeting schedule for 2019, which one do we usually cancel?
Usually cancel, I'd cancel the second.
Second one? Do we have a motion to cancel July 5?
Well, let's talk about that just a minute. Let's just talk about it. That's July the 1st, so anybody that's going out of town for the July 4th holiday, like Jim, won't be here.
That's right, Jim won't be here. That's right.
So, if we had.
All right, so you wanna cancel the first one?
15th.
Is that okay to, to drop the first one? 'Cause we'll kinda be done with stuff then, budget and all that.
I hope so.
Do, do what you like, but to, um, proceed the way we had planned and talk to the local government commission for the Rowan Salisbury School and RCCC financing, it's on tap for the public hearing to be that first meeting in July.
Okay, so that's the kind of stuff we need to know.
Sorry.
Okay.
So, what are you saying?
So, she's saying we need to have a July 1st.
I appreciate if you'd meet that day.
What, what day is the 4th? Is that Thursday?
You gonna give me your frock while you're gone?
All right, so, uh, well, you know, okay, a lot of folks won't go out of town until maybe Friday after the 4th, okay. So, uh, do we have a motion then that we would cancel the July 15th meeting?
No move.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Finance Department, Budget Amendments, we've got, move approval for the budget amendments. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we got some board appointments. Adult. Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, Terrell Bryan, uh, applied for reappointment with a three-year term. Uh, have a motion to approve him.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Flora White applied for reappointment for a three-year term. This will be retroactive, though, to July one of two thousand eighteen, okay? Cause of some record-keeping issues, so, uh, approve Flora White, effective July first, two thousand eighteen, for a three-year.
So moved.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 You don't even know what we're talking about. Force Develop, Development Board. Corey Hill applied for reappointment, it'd be a three-year term, approval for that.
So moved.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Town of Faith recommends the following, uh, ETJ appointments. Gloria Wilhelm and Vicky Miller, uh, for three-year terms, and in, on the, uh, Planning Board, Catherine Gamewell for a three-year term. So those three, motion in a second?
Motion, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
City Salisbury Planning Board ETJ, the City Council recommends the appointment of Tim Norris as ETJ member, that'll be for two years. A motion to approve that in a second.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Local Emergency Planning Committee recommends appointment of Chris Fleming to fill the slot, uh, for Norant. Is that just one name?
I guess.
Okay. Uh, there are no term dates for members of this committee, so, uh, appoint Chris Fleming, a motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Lock Volunteer Fire Department Commissioners, Mary Ann Parrish applied for reappointment, so a motion to approve Mary Ann Parrish.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Region F Aging Advisory Committee and, and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee, Juanita Woods applied for reappointment as an alternate member, and Eileen Solomon applied for reappointment as, as an at-large member, so a motion to approve those two.
I would object to Juanita. Um, I believe she is still employed by Ruthie Holmes. And quite frankly, I don't believe that that's a good situation to have.
Who is this?
Juanita Woods.
Uh, Madam Clerk, is that an issue?
They do not allow the, um, directors of the, uh, agencies that receive money a vote.
To be on the board?
So to have an employee.
Okay, can we table that?
Yeah, cause it's July first, when it starts.
First meeting, okay. Uh, we'll table that one. All right, so, uh, Eileen Solomon, we have a motion in a second for that?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rockwell Rural Volunteer Fire Department Commissioners, Jeff Boger, Alan Mills, and Kent, Kent Wilhelm, applied for reappointment, motion in a second.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Chip Short, uh, applied for reappointment. Uh, Mr. Short has completed two full terms at Rowan Cabarrus Community College Board of Trustees, but he is the existing chair, so that would be embarrassing if he were not on the board, so do we have a motion to waive, uh, the terms and approve a, a, a third term?
So moved.
And, um, yeah, I'm sorry, in a second?
Second.
All right, then, um, so then, well, I kinda did both. Allow him to have an additional term, and so for clarity, uh, motion to approve them, uh, approve him for reappointment to that board then.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Town of Cleveland Zoning and Planning Eugene Adkins applied for reappointment as a member, and that'll be for three years, motion and approval.
Motion. So moved.
All right, in a second, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, for those of you watching this at home, we have a lot of openings, and we'd really appreciate you getting involved, supporting your community. We'd love to have you on a board, and, uh, we'd make you, uh, make you a board member, so, um, look up on, uh, Rowan County's website, and, uh, you can see those boards that are available, or call our county clerk, or see one of your commissioners. We'd be happy to get you hooked up on that. Uh, let's see, so we are not going to adjourn, we're gonna recess. Do we need a motion to recess? Okay, so we'll just recess until six o'clock. Thank you for coming, and, uh, we will come back together at six o'clock. Yep. Good evening. Good evening. Oh, come on, good evening.
Evening.
Yeah, that's better. Hey, uh, so we are back in session, so I'll call us back to session, and, uh, we had recessed after our three o'clock meeting. So if there's anyone else that would like to sign up to speak, um, then you would make your way over there and, uh, and do so. Okay? So we really don't have, uh, an agenda. I don't think we have a written agenda for the public hearing. So, um, what we'll do is we'll just, we're gonna go into our public hearing, I'll gavel us into that, and, um, then I've got folks who have signed up, and I'll just call you one at a time, and, uh, you can come up, you got three minutes, and, um, just tell us what's on your mind, okay? And then, uh, yeah, three minutes.
Yep.
Uh, April, are you? Oh, there we go, excellent, thank you. So, um, you know, if we've got questions for you, we may wanna ask you that, or maybe we won't, I don't know. We'll see how this goes, okay? All right, so we'll open a public hearing, and we're gonna begin with Sheila Holshouser. Welcome, Sheila.
Thank you. My name's Sheila Holshouser, uh, work at Department of Social Services. For the past eleven years of employment there with, uh, DSS, I've observed the workload increase for our group of employees. They are the ones who make sure that they have the Medicaid for families, age-blind, disabled, skilled nursing care Medicaid, family, food nutrition services, childcare and energy assistance, and also special assistance for those in assisted living facilities. Uh, beginning in two thousand twelve, um, we've had an increase in the technology that we've had to use called NCFAST from the state of North Carolina. It's the eligibility assist, uh, system. Prior to that, we also had a document management system, so our technology use has increased for all of our employees, and every duty of every day has involved the use of various systems at DSS, not just in my division as Economic Services, but also in Social Work Services. So the forty-hour week is not a normal week for our employees. This takes time to process these new cases in our new system, because every year, we began in two thousand twelve with food nutrition, and then each year after that, Medicaid went in for family and children's, Medicaid for adult, Medicaid went in. Each year, we've had a new program added to that system. So the technology of that system has advanced, and along with the troubleshooting that we've had to do every time something was reprogrammed in the system. So it takes a lot of time to take care of those cases. Um, as we've become more technology-centered during, in our agency for the past year, we've needed someone to help troubleshoot in those areas. It's, we do have a person that's an informationist, um, processing assistant that has been in this position, and he's a security officer for all of these systems, but he has also began doing other things as far as troubleshooting for our systems. Since he's been there, he has been working outside of his classification since his start date because of his skill level. He just came into this, into the agency, caught on to every system we have, and has been able to help us in, in much greater area than we thought was possible. Um, he has also been able to write programs for us that helped in our business processes. Um, he wrote a program in, in Microsoft Access to help us in our processing of, um, requirements that are required by our, the state eligibility. Um, as I'm sure you're aware, uh, DSS is one of the few agencies that receives reimbursement for our positions. Um, as you know, I'm sure you saw in the budget earlier that, that income maintenance caseworkers there, they are reimbursed by the state at seventy-five percent of their salary, along with the equipment that they use. Along with that, this position that we're looking at, the Information Press Processing Assistant, we're asking for it to be reclassed to the System Analyst. We've calculated this cost at only a difference of five thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars for this position to be changed. The reason that we asked for this, that I'm here advocating for this, is that the person we have in this position at this time is just, the skill level that he has and the knowledge that he has obtained is just great. So if we lost him, he would be a, a great loss to our agency. And as far as, you know, hiring someone to replace him, they would not have the knowledge he already has, and he would also have the ability of the task that he can do would have to be done by someone, which would probably fall in the county IT department. So this is a win-win situation for both county IT and us to be able to retain this employee if we can reclass him. Thank you.
Uh, thank, thank you very much. I see that, um, we're gonna take a second here, y'all just talk amongst yourselves. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm looking up what she's.
Yeah, I, I'm aware of their concerns, and we've addressed that to the best of, uh, what I feel is our capability at this time. Uh, DSS is not being reclassified this year. We're not studying that group. So, I mean, that's, you know, we, we can't afford to do every department at, at one time, and that's, that employee is in that group, so, um, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm on. Um, just as a follow-up to the manager's comments, the gentleman that has been this Wizkid um, is being hired away, um, at almost twice what he was making at DSS, and he will be going to the IT department here. The skill level that he has developed with DSS and his knowledge of the programs and being able to train new staff has just been phenomenal, and quite frankly, saved us money.
That's good, well, thank you. All right, Amy Wagner. Welcome, Amy.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Amy. I am a Rowan County citizen, as well as Rowan County employee, and I, as well as Ms. Holshouser, am here to advocate, um, for the reclassification of the Information Processing Assistant. And, you know, I certainly understand Mrs., Mr. Church's position, he's got a large job, but we are simply asking for this one reclass, um, as this is a very critical need for our agency. We have so many automated systems within DSS, um, more so than many of the other departments within the county, and not having this reclass would be a huge loss, um, and, and probably cost us some money, as Ms. Klusman said, um, because then that would take away a full-time person from IT to just stand by at DSS and help us with all the troubleshooting with these processes, with NCFAST, with the new MOUs that DHHS has put out forth. You know, it is critical need for us to have the systems up and working as they are. This reclass is at a sixty-three percent reimbursement, so it is actually only gonna cost the county five thousand dollars, five thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars a year for this one reclass. At sixty-three percent, I, I just don't know how we can't a, a, afford to reclass him when, knowing the greater, you know, picture at the end of the day, um, with what this position, you know, allows us to do. It allows IT to work within IT's parameters and not have to have someone at DSS, you know, constantly. So this is more than just a security officer of protecting the files and the confidentiality information at DSS. This is, you know, again, as Ms. Klusman said, a Wizkid. He writes programs for us, he makes sure NCFAST is up and running, um, and he can assure that some of our needs are being met, and with data driven, driven MOUs that we have now. So I think it's very important that we do take a look at this one reclass. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
The, the employees can be reimbursed with federal and state money, whether they're in DSS or in, or in IT, if they're doing the work. So it doesn't matter which department they're in, is if they're doing that work, we can get reimbursed for that money.
I'm confused, Commissioner Klusman, is, is he moving to IT?
What I hit, my understanding is that he is going to move to IT. Am I correct? Oh, he has applied. Okay, so it's not a done deal. We'd like to keep him at DSS. But, but I will tell you, I will tell you that, that, um, IT has offered him almost twice as much.
Good for him.
I know. But he could earn that much at DSS with this reclass, which would only cost the county fifty-three hundred dollars.
So if they've, well, if he's gonna make twice as much there, then the fifty-three hundred wouldn't.
So if they, if they've offered him twice as much, that means they've offered him the job? Or that's just how much he could make in that position?
How much he could make.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Church is right, you know, anyone that does that work could be reimbursed, but it's taking a staff member away from the IT department.
All right, uh, Ron Price. Ron, thank you for being here.
Thank you for listening to me. Um, again, my name's Ron Price. I'm a fourteen-year resident of Rowan County, um, living out Long Ferry Road at Anchor Downs on the lake. I've served on the board of Miller's Ferry Fire Department in the past for over ten, ten years, and currently I'm a fire commissioner there. Imagine just for a minute for me, sitting at your home and experiencing a heart event. Facing the decision of driving to the hospital or calling EMS. The hospital is eleven miles or nineteen minutes away from my house. This is a decision my neighbors and I make, have to make. When I moved here, I realized that fire protection, um, would not be what I was used to coming from a larger city. What I didn't realize was that the EMS service was even more suspect. Um, this came to light about six years ago when there was a jet ski accident out in front of our house. Two young men were injured colliding in midair. EMS was called, response time, and I'll be generous, was over forty-five minutes. At that point in time, I went to the current fire chief and asked him to start tracking EMS response time for me. The average he got back was twenty-four plus minutes, and I'm saying twenty-four minutes was generally about the minimum. I sat on the board of Miller's Ferry Fire Department, um, when there was the advance of GPS technology and mapping capabilities, and fire departments five-mile radius. When that happened, some of the residents in Anchor Downs were outside that five-mile radius by road. We were forced to do something. Um, we built a new fire station. It was a controversial decision to make. We built it with EMS in mind. It has living quarters, but that option never really panned out. Despite the vote, the cost involved, I voted for it. It was just the right thing to do. My house is also within a five-mile radius of EMS Station Eighty-Three, but at the same time, my house is twelve to fourteen miles away, depending which route you take. This equates to seventeen to nineteen minutes. That's further than the hospital is away from my house. The majority of the residents in Anchor Downs are elderly. At sixty-one, I'm one of the younger ones. Qualified volunteers are harder and harder to find. There's hardly a station that you can drive by these days without a Volunteers Needed sign out front. If it wasn't for a handful of really dedicated volunteers at Miller's Ferry, I'm not sure who would answer the medical service calls. As they age out, I don't know who's gonna replace them. I was one of the members of Muff Chief's lease earlier to discuss options, and we talked about adding on to the building at Miller's Ferry. Unfortunately, that idea was cut from the budget before you guys ever got to see it. Our current account sees experience one of the largest expansions in history, yet simple, basic services aren't currently being provided to all our acci, our residents. I guess it's just too easy to ignore the tops of, of the county. In conclusion, conclusion, I'd like to ask you just to do the right thing and address the substantial EMS service of our community. And oh, by the way, if I'd called. I'd called EMS at the beginning of my statement due to a heart issue, they'd still be 20 minutes away. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Price. Cindy Fink. Cindy, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Fink, and I'm the executive director of Meals on Wheels. Today, I speak on behalf of the homebound seniors of Rowan County. These are folks who cannot stand long enough to prepare a nutritious meal, nor are they mobile enough to travel to congregate meal sites. Many are homebound due to stroke, dementia, illness, broken hips, missing limbs, or recent surgery. They were referred to Meals on Wheels by their physicians, the hospital, a rehab facility, or their families. They need a nutritious meal, social interaction, and a safety check. Meals on Wheels provides these services to over 230 participants each day, with the help of over 1,000 volunteers and a staff of two full-time and six part-time employees. This year, we'll provide over 57,000 meals to homebound seniors. For the coming year, the increasing cost of food, operations, and technology will stretch our resources. Our direct meal costs will increase from $4.20 to $4.51. We are serving 25% more participants than this time last year, and we're getting an average of 39 referrals a month. We want to be able to serve all homebound seniors who are in need and who are eligible for our program. With the number of seniors in Rowan County now exceeding the number of children age 0 to 18, the need for senior services is only going to increase. We provide a 100% subsidy for 58 participants, or 25% of our total participants, and an average of an 80% subsidy for all other participants. In 2018, 2019, we received $59,000 from the Home Care Community Block Grant, and the Home Care Community Advisory Committee has recommended us for the same amount for the coming year. But we need more funding to continue providing more services. We're asking for a $62,000 appropriation, which will feed 33 participants for one year. We ask the county commissioners to approve this appropriation of Meals on Wheels for the 2019-2020 budget year. Thank you.
I think we can do anything we want to do.
Ms. Fink, would you please come back? Come back to the microphone, please. Okay, do you currently have a waiting list?
Yes, we do.
And how many people are on that?
We have about 10 on it right this minute.
And I didn't catch the total, your total budget amount.
Our total budget amount is $639,000.
And how much money did you have to raise last year to meet all of your needs?
We raised all but the $59,000 given to us through the Home Care Community Block Grant, and our budget was, we are flat. So our budget last year was $639,000.
And do other counties help to pay for Meals on Wheels?
Yes, there are many different models of Meals on Wheels. Some counties have Meals on Wheels under their senior services umbrella. And, for example, I visited New Hanover County, and they have Meals on Wheels and their congregate meals and many other senior services under that, and that's funded 100% by the county and the Home Care Community Block Grant. Other areas like Burlington, Alamance County, their Meals on Wheels is separate, but they usually receive some kind of allocation from their county as well as funding from the Home Care Community Block Grant.
Okay, thank you.
The county got involved last year, didn't they? Didn't we give some amount last year?
No, sir.
Through Ruffey Homes?
It came from the grant.
It's all so confusing. All of these, it's very confusing to us.
Well, we'd be happy to have an education time sometime, if you'd like.
Okay. So, so this would, you're still getting the 59. This is just a, this is a $62,000 increase over last year, and you're asking us to pay for the $62,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Clear answer. I like that. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, Tom Robinson. Tom, welcome.
Thank you, sir. So, for any of you that have given talks like this in the past, following your executive director, especially during questions, a lot of the things that I was going to say have been mentioned, but I'll go ahead with my remarks to make sure we've caught them all. I am Tom Robinson. I'm president of the Board of Directors, and I've lived here in Rowan County for 35 years. In the last year, we've serviced 421 individual homebound people. The need is growing dramatically, like Cindy said. In just, in just the last two years, we've gone from seven to 10 referrals a month to seven to 10 referrals a week. So it's dramatic. We ask participants, like Cindy said, to pay between nothing or $7.50. Our board has elected to pay for 25% of those folks that can't afford anything. So that's about 58 to 60 people a week that we pay for out of our funding. Our goal is to feed 200, I'm using round numbers, 250 people, five days a week, 52 weeks a year, so about 250 people, 250 days. Our meal program, if you do the math, then comes to $456,000. If I do the math for you real quick, maybe unbeknownst to most people, we don't collect $7.50 from virtually everybody. Our average collection on those 250 people is $2.25. So $2.25 times 250 times 250 people is $140,000. It costs us $456,000 if we had no employees or no volunteers just to buy the food that we serve. So the $59,000 we got from the Home Care Community Block Grant, plus that 140, is $206,000. We need 456 just to pay for the food. We need another $250,000. The only way we get that is by writing grants, which we do full-time. We do fundraisers. You see our name all over the place, trying to raise money from anybody we can, and we solicit donations. And when we do all of those things, we barely got by. Last year was the first year we broke even and didn't have to go into savings. We need help, and like Cindy said, other counties pay for a bigger chunk than we do here. The answer for us becomes very clear, and understanding you have an awful lot to do and a big responsibility with the budget that you manage. If we don't feed these people, if we don't collect enough money, somebody's gonna have to feed them. We don't make any money. We're a nonprofit or losing money at best. We need more help. $62,000 might sound like a lot. It's only 10, it's only 7% of what our food costs. We could ask for a lot more. We feel like we deserve a lot more. We would love to sit down with you separately and talk about things that we see as opportunities for you all to help, particularly through your role with the Home Care Community Block Grant and that task force. There's a lot of opportunity, we think, for more, better understanding and better use of that money to help feed more people. So we're asking for $62,000 this afternoon. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
I have a question. Sorry, I'm sorry.
I just, could you just speak a little bit more about the number of volunteers that you have and what kind of value that is, if you had to go out and hire people versus having volunteers, especially with their personal expense of using their vehicle and...
Yeah, I don't, I don't, so I've been doing this for six years. I retired from Food Line after a 30-year career. Now I do full-time volunteer work. It's impossible to give you a dollar figure with 1,000 people. The average age of our volunteers is over 70. So it's mostly retired people, and they, there are lots of widows and widowers, and they drive together, and they serve on one of the many routes that we have. They pay for everything on their, on their own. Without them, like Cindy said, we have two full-time people and four part-time people. It's impossible to run a $600,000 company with six people. So the 1,000 people are literally indispensable.
Yeah, I have a question for Ms. Fink. On your, your total income, you're showing government grants and reimbursement, $67,000. Where is that coming from?
There is money available through the USDA that we have an opportunity to apply for. It's called NSIP Nutrition Services Incentive Program, and that is 75 cents a meal for those who do not pay for their meals. So because we serve more people for free than are funded through the Home Care Community Block Grant, we can apply for 75 cents reimbursement for those other people we serve, and that would be the only reimbursement we would get towards their meals.
Okay, so the question I guess I have, if you have 10 folks on the waiting list, and if that income is based on the USDA, then the income that you're asking the county for is not shown in your budget?
Correct.
So that's gonna be it. So your budget's gonna go from $639 to $710,000?
Well, it would be shown under our grants and foundations. We did not break it out as a governmental grant, because actually, we don't put it in our budget until we know it's a possibility. And you're looking at our 2019, 20, we operate on a calendar year, so that's our budget for 2019, and we'll be developing our 2020 budget. We have done some work towards that when we worked on the grant materials, but you won't see it on there unless we put it in the budget and know it's a reality.
My question is, if, if we're, if, if the recommended budget's approved, and you get that big of an increase to your budget, there's not, is there gonna be a waiting list?
There's a good possibility that we'll be able to deal with that waiting list with some of those funds, if all our other grants come through as we've planned.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're not looking for an increase in our budget. We're looking for you all to help us pay for the $250,000, no matter how we're gonna get. So if we can get your 60, we still gotta find another 180, which then will feed those folks plus the 10 that are still on the waiting list. We're not gonna increase the budget. We're asking you to help us fund the budget.
But we are currently serving 230, so at our planned budget to serve 250, we will be able to absorb those 10.
Okay, well, I just, you know, so, so with our appropriation, there will not be a waiting list?
Of 10, that's correct. Last year, at one point during the year, we had 48 on our waiting list.
How much does one meal cost per year?
We use a program meal cost of $7.50. The direct meal cost for the coming year, beginning July 1, will be $4.51.
Yeah, but if, let's say if I'm on the program and I receive services for a year, how much does that one person cost you per year?
For the whole year, $1,875.
So for...
We're asking you to help us with 33.
So if you have the finances to support you paying $7.50 a meal, that's what we would ask you to pay. If your finances don't support that, then we would ask you for an amount based on our sliding scale.
So currently, you have 230 participants?
Yes, sir.
And so you'll be able to add 30 more to that with our appropriation?
At least 20. Our goal is 250 with these numbers.
Okay, thank you.
The difference between the $7 figure that you're using in 451, the 451 is the cost?
Is the direct meal cost, yes.
And then the 7 is administration, all that, lights?
7 is what we call the program meal cost. Those are the direct expenses related to the program. We don't, as a nonprofit, include our fundraising or administrative expenses under our program cost.
All right, thank you. Jason, welcome.
Chairman, ads and commissioners, my name is Jason Burnett. I currently serve as deputy fire chief and secretary to the board of directors of South Salisbury Fire Department. I'm speaking on behalf of this organization, seeking your support for a fire district tax increase. The current recommendation for our board, from our board and fire commissioners, is to increase our tax rate from 7.34 to 9.34. Additionally, no comments were received during the public hearing we held on May 19. Since 2010, our calls for service have increased 86%. This increase has placed a significant burden on our volunteers. We now operate a 24/7 hybrid part-time staffing model. To align with the anticipated growth, we completed a facility expansion and renovation in 2016. This year, we took delivery of a new fire engine, replacing one that provided over 22 years of a continual service. In 2020, our self-contained breathing apparatus, or SCBA, equipment will reach its end of life 15 years, requiring a full replacement. If we maintain our current tax rate, our shortfall will be $54,000, or 10% of our budget in fiscal year 1920, and $120,000, or 22% of our budget in fiscal year 2021. In FY 1920, we will process a final debt service payment of $52,000 for equipment, however, at the same time authorize the first payment of $59,000 for the new fire engine. In FY 2021, we will authorize the first payment on the SCBA replacement project, estimated at $50,000 in addition to the current debt service for both the facility and the apparatus or fire truck that we've taken on. Next year, we'll also be the first year operating without the annual monetary support from a local foundation. This shortfall was not unrealized. However, it was not projected to be this substantial, as commercial growth and the reevaluation market data were expected to draw a larger tax return. Our original goal was to absorb the deficit this year and increase our tax rate next year, but unfortunately, the impact was too great to overcome. While we expect future growth, we're not, we are unable at this time to estimate a true return. We have also taken a long-term financial stance to ensure our fund balance remains healthy, as recommended by our independent auditor of one to two years of available debt service, and working towards being able to cover future debt and unforeseen expenses. In 2018, we had an unexpected fire truck repair that resulted in withdrawing $51,000 to replace the motor in our ladder truck. Voluntariism also, is also in a historic decline. While we, and while we look to constantly improve the area of recruitment and retention, this does not lend a quick resolution for saying we can easily cut one of our largest expenditures, which is part-time staffing, to make up the difference. Other areas of the budget have been reduced for practical as well. We're also expected to provide the same level of service as a full-time career fire department with only a small portion of available funding. In closing, we consider ourselves fiscally responsible with the public funding received and pride ourselves in providing an efficient level of service at a reasonable overall tax rate. While our reevaluation year is not the best time, we hope that you will support a tax increase to assist with our debt service, even if it is lower than the 2-cent recommendation. Thank you all for what you do for the fire service and citizens of Rowan County.
Thank you, Jason. All right, Norma Honeycutt.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Good evening. I'm Norma Honeycutt. I'm with Partners in Learning Child Development and Family Resource Center. Here in Salisbury, we have two campuses, and we have one at Catawba, and we have one over at Novant. And I'm here tonight to talk just about two and a half more minutes about our Triple P program. So I wanted to share, you heard about it this morning from our expert, Tanya Correll, which is our social worker and actually oversees it and implements it. But we also have eight other practitioners that provide Triple P. So it's, it's just a wonderful program. We have this year seen 80 families one-on-one in their home, or in the garage where they work, or at McDonald's where they work, or in the homeless shelter, because it is about going to them. So many of them don't have transportation. So I want to share, I'm sorry.
All right, we're recording.
Do you, oh, okay, for the, because I have a loud voice, so that makes it really loud. So I just wanna share one quick story, because I happen to be a Triple P practitioner. practitioner. We are accredited in all the way from birth through teenagers, and we have, as I said earlier, eight of those. So I work with one family, because I like to keep my feet wet, and I'm passionate about serving families. This family has been involved with DSS, and her children have been removed once. She has her children back. She has a one-year-old, a two-year-old, and a five-year-old. The five-year-old has autism. So I go into the home, and we're doing a Triple P session, and I'm talking about what form of discipline do you use, okay? And she says, "Well, I set them to timeout." Go to timeout. I said, "Go and do wall, go sit on the wall." I'm like, "Well, timeout's a good strategy, and, you know, she has them to go sit on the wall, that's a good strategy." Well, I never served in the military or had a military dad, so do some of you know what a wall sit is? A wall sit is literally...
That's a wall sit.
So, she's trying to make a two-year-old and a five-year-old with autism do a wall sit. So I'm like, "Okay, um, how long do they sit down?" Sit there. Well, the five-year-old sits for five minutes, the two-year-old for two minutes, isn't that right? You use timeout by their age. And I said, "Okay." I said, "Well, you know, have you ever done a wall sit?" And she's like, "No." And I said, "Well, let's try one." So I got my timer out, and I said, "Go over there and do a wall sit." And so she went, and she didn't get quite to two minutes, and she's like, "My, Ms. Norm, my legs are on fire." I said, "Well, it's okay, you can stop." Now, what do you think would be an appropriate time? 30 seconds? I said, "Okay, the next time one of them does something, let's try that." Well, lo and behold, they were playing with swords, and the two-year-old beats the five-year-old over the head, where she used to would say, "Stop it, give me that sword." She said, "You need to go over and do your wall sit." And she goes over to that child, and I can't demonstrate, and she says, "Okay, watch the timer. You've got to sit for 30 seconds on the wall, because you hit your brother." She told him what he was doing. And then she, "Watch the timer. Eye contact the entire 30 seconds." And then she said, "Okay, the timer's gone off. Now you go back over, and you tell your brother you're sorry, and you can play again with your brother, but this time, let's play with the swords this way." That's what Triple P is, guys. She used every Triple P parenting technique that I had taught her. And it's doable, and it's usable, and it's gonna change lives. Now, I fully believe that it's gonna keep these three little ones out of the foster care system. I also believe it's gonna reduce their trauma, and it's gonna give them good outcomes in life, and isn't that what it's all about? So consider supporting our Triple P program for Partners in Learning. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Norma, can I ask you a question?
Any question you have. And by the way, Mr. Green, I love your son.
He, well, thank you.
He serves on our board, and he is wonderful. Thank you.
We all love him.
He takes after his father. The PPP program that we're asked today to support?
Yes.
Is, are we going to add folks to you, to your, to your group, or are we being asked to support training for folks that you already have?
Great question. Okay, we are probably the, I'll use this word loosely, the cheapest bunch of people you would ever want to meet. We're frugal. So we have received all of this training, that's $2,000 each, and I am accredited in five levels. I am a $10,000 person, and we didn't pay one single penny, because we get it for free, we drive to Charlotte, or I've been to Asheville, wherever we gotta go to get this training for free. So no to that. Yes, to serve more families. And it's expensive. It's, it's not cheap, okay? If I did a group training, I could train everybody in here, but would I get what I just told you about? No. Okay, so we're going to the people. And by the way, this mother doesn't have any transportation, so she couldn't attend the training.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So what's the $50,000 for then?
Okay, we're asking for $25,000, okay? Then another agency is asking for the other. All right, Judy, do you wanna mention that, talk about that?
Yeah, um, it's gonna be divided between Partners in Learning, and do you get your money from Smart Start then?
We do not get any funding for this. Actually, there's no additional funding for this. We do, we are contracted with DSS to provide some for them.
Okay, so it, it will go to several organizations. So Norma's organization, and as she describes it with their partnership with DSS, Smart Start does some of this parent training, and probably the bigger one is the Prevent Child Abuse Rowan, and that's where the courts get connected with that program.
And the courts are also connected with us through DSS. Our problem currently is, we can't see any more clients, because we don't have the money to see clients. So we now have, we spent the past year and a half building an infrastructure, and we don't have the funds to be able to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Where's the other 25, go? All right, Bobby Fox? You're good? You sure? All right, Amy Brown. Saw her come in.
Would it be possible for Margaret, straight up, from Prevent Child Abuse to come up as well?
Sure. Yeah, she came in late, absolutely. No, heavens, it's okay.
Because we're on the Triple P topic. Do you wanna start, Margaret, and then I'll talk about subsidy briefly?
Okay, actually, the reason that I was late was that I was looking up some research, because I understood earlier in the day, there were some questions about its efficacy and whether or not it could be court-ordered. So the answer to the court-ordered is yes, it may be, under the Juvenile Delinquency and Substance Use Prevention Plan. So that's statute 147-33.47, and that states that programmatic concepts that are effective in preventing juvenile delinquency and substance abuse, and that should be made available as basic services in the communities, including, and the second point is, in-home training and community-based family counseling and parent training. So that is what Triple P addresses. The other issue that was raised was whether or not it actually does reduce delinquencies and court involvement. There was a very large study that involved 18 counties in South Carolina in 2009. It was reported on, and the incidence of child maltreatment for children up to eight years old were 22% lower in the counties that received Triple P services versus the control counties that did not receive anything special. This is an important risk factor, the report goes on to say, for later adolescent problem behaviors. So it can be inferred that these will have long-term consequences on the community. Out-of-home placements decreased in the Triple P counties, but increased in the control counties, and were 16% higher in control counties than in the experimental Triple P counties. And another important finding was a reduction in child visits to emergency rooms and admissions to hospitals for injuries due to child maltreatment, only in the Triple P counties. So there is a huge list of Triple Pay, Triple P research that is available on a particular website, so I can leave that with you if you'd like that information. I also just wanted to say that Norma's program and ours complement each other. We don't step on each other's toes. Theirs is very good at home visiting for people who don't have access to transportation, and also for children with developmental disabilities or any kind of disabilities. So there are very specific levels of the intervention, from one-hour seminars that might be all apparent needs, to very specific and like the whole ball of wax sort of thing, in either in-home treatment or in group classes. So Smart Start funds from zero to five, but both of our organizations can serve up through the teen years, and that's why it's important to have more flexible funding, because Smart Start's hands are tied, for a large extent, to the zero-to-five population. Thank you.
And I'm Amy Brown. I'm the Executive Director of Smart Start Rowan, and I'll speak briefly, because I don't have much time left, about childcare subsidy. As Margaret said, we are the agency in the community that serves the well-being of the whole child in the birth through five age range. So once they hit kindergarten, our hands are tied with our Smart Start funding. And I think you've heard about the childcare subsidy waitlist earlier today in your meeting, but there are currently 283 children on the waitlist that consist of 202 families. So just so you understand, high-quality childcare is important for families so that they can work. Subsidized childcare is extremely important for families so that they can afford to pay for childcare. I was talking to Norma. I actually feel like I should do like a, a wall sit, but, anyway, we were talking earlier, and their tuition for childcare on a monthly basis is around $700 to $800 a month at minimum. So childcare is expensive. Subsidized childcare helps to offset the cost for working parents, and it allows parents to work, which actually provides a return on investment to our economy. Like I said, we serve the birth-through-five population, and we have provided DSS staff or DSS with some funding for subsidy, but we can only serve the birth-through-five. And I know that there's a waitlist across the board, and there's just not enough funding to go around. So it's an economic issue that needs to be considered, so that these parents can work and these families can be in high, these parents can work and these children can be in high-quality learning environments.
All right, thank you. Yes, thank you very much. All right, is there anyone that came in late, didn't get to sign up, would like to speak? Bobby, you still good? No, I'm not trying to talk you into it. Barry? No? Okay. All right, anyone else? All right, then we'll close the public hearing, and we're gonna take, uh, okay, no, we're not. Let's see here. So we got some. So we have added quite a bit today. It's been a big day. So I wanna submit to finance another cut. Courthouse roof, this is in the manager's budget message, page 5, $421,900. We can put that off a year. So let's cut that out. We spoke with, let's see, this is under Facilities Management, spoke with Don, and also with the sheriff, and object number 573000, kitchen floor at the main jail for $22,000. We'll delay that. It's under Facilities Management. All right, that's all I've got.
What about the Crawford Building? Do you wanna?
Oh, yeah. So that's a, that's a good discussion for the commissioners to have. Let me see here. On page 5 of the budget message, under new debt service, upfitting the Crawford Building, that would be so that we could move everybody from some rental space over on Carr Street. Over there currently, what did we have budgeted? $240,000?
$60,000.
$260,000. So that would be, is that a, is that a four-year cost? Three-year cost? Okay. So the current cost for rent space is $98,000, if I, is that right? $98,000?
It is. That's correct.
So, um, versus the $260,000, if we're looking for ways to, to try to put off some expenses, that's something that we could discuss?
I think, isn't part of that studying the parking for the, over there? Or is it, am I mistaken?
Yeah, well, we're trying to, to, to take care of some of the parking this year by putting the gate up, if we can get approval. But what we're, what I talked about doing is if we, if we remodel that building, is have the architect design, you know, some type of brick, brick wall around where the judicial parking is located.
So would we need to leave some monies in here for an architect, or?
Well, you, you mean to do, to do the, the brick wall that the, where the parking for the judicial employees are at?
Yeah, I mean, I think those are two different issues. I think that still needs to be looked at if we don't remodel.
Was that part of this?
I thought, was it, is that somewhere else? I thought it was part of this.
Well, yeah, I was hoping to try to, yes, it was part of that. It may not have been enough money, but, but, but that was the intent, is to, is to get, when we, if we did that project and bid it out to get a bid alternate on putting up a, a brick wall around where the judicial employees park. But we could do that separately, if that's something that the board wants to do. And that's been a, does everybody know what I'm talking about? There, there were, okay, we, we can, you know, if you wanted to, you know, we could get an estimate on what that would cost and do that separately.
So just take this hole out, and just, that's something that'll come up later, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to leave, if you wanted, if you wanted to cut $260, or if you wanted to leave $100,000 in there, I, I hope that would cover a fence.
One time.
One time.
Not the $260 a year.
Yeah.
And you hope to have all probation in there?
Well, not if we cut it. If we cut it...
I'm saying if we leave the two, what, $260 or $230?
If we le-
$260.
If we leave the $260, the hope is to have all the probation there unless they start adding staff, but we would have to relocate guarding that lot, um, somewhere else to make it work completely.
This would just push it off a year.
Well, I'd like to see some money left in there, so we could at least get that started, because that's a, that's a good payback for us. If we're paying $90,000 of rent a year, and we can get a payback in less than three years, I'd, I'd like to at least leave the architectural money in there this year, whatever we think that that would be, so we can get started.
$150,000?
Hundred, $100,000.
Leave $100,000 for the wall and the architectural?
Well, the architect has already been paid. Some of the architect has.
Okay, okay. So just leave $100,000?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're gonna reduce the budget by $160,000, because Erin said, the architectural fees, we've already paid some, and it's ongoing, and, well, it'd be in this year's budget.
Yeah.
And we'll leave $100,000 for the wall. Right, for the parking lot?
Okay, yeah, so that'll leave some architectural and the wall.
It'll leave money for the architecture and the wall.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be fine, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
I'm good. How much is that cut now? $160,000, $420,000, $580,000, $589,000?
Yeah, what, what you just added is $603,000, almost $604,000. What, you just added to deduct? Sorry. So do you wanna buy?
That's a new man.
Where'd you go to college?
Hey now.
So, we've added to subtract, how much?
What, what you, in total, the amount of the subtracts, not counting the movement from contingency, because that was a wash, is... $706,000. I'm rounding, but $706,000.
Okay.
That's decrease, or is that the total?
I got the EMS?
Why EMS? Well, the EMS here for the $220.
Oh, okay. So, that is in there?
This is the additions.
All right, so kind of an operational question here. As we begin to pass the budget, we pass the budget in several different stages, different departments.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd said earlier that we may not pass it tonight, but then again, we may. So, if we move ahead to pass some or all of it, then can you give us some direction on those budget items that... Or I guess it's divisions that we need to pass? Do you have a list of those?
Of the revisions?
Well...
About the different funds?
I have a list of the different funds.
Yes, the different funds.
Okay.
And then would we need to include in those each of the additions and deletions that we made? Or is talking about it throughout this day enough for the purposes of passing the budget? Would we need to enumerate?
You've talked about it. I don't know. There might be consensus, but I don't know. So, what I would recommend is that you pass a fund's budget as recommended with the following additions and deletions, and then if anybody doesn't like that list, then you can discuss it.
Okay.
Is that good?
Yeah.
I think the funds are little red tabs.
Okay.
And I think majority of what we've talked about was in 101, I believe.
The only changes I know are 101 and 201, which is fire.
What do we start it with?
201?
You see the tab for Fund 201?
Yes.
Fire Districts? So, all the small funds are in the back. Everything before that is Fund 101.
Oh, my goodness. All right, well, let's begin... Can we agree to begin on 201?
Sure.
I know that we had a couple of questions on the fire tax. Commissioner Kasky? Maybe that's not the easiest one to start on.
Um, I guess it depends. I mean, there was just the two... Woodleaf and South Salisbury that we talked about earlier in the work session, and I had brought up, you know, whatever reduction in the overall tax rate we set that we would change, that we would also change those funds, so I don't...
How about if we come back to that last?
Yeah.
How about if we do that? All right, so Fund 202, I don't believe we've made any changes to that, have we? All right, so then we would ask for a motion to pass Fund 202. So, do we have a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on this? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fund 501 is risk management. No changes to that?
Correct.
Do you know? Is that right? No changes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Fund 601, environmental management. No changes to the manager's budget on that. Do we have a motion approved?
So moved. Second.
In a second. Two motions, two seconds.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Fund 603 is the airport. Believe there's any changes in that. Motion approved, Fund 603.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Fund 605? Is there no 604?
Correct, there's no 604.
Fund 605, the water fund. No changes there. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we'll go back then to 101?
Yes, sir.
Can I have some paper here?
Absolutely.
Just take the whole thing. You through writing, don't you?
I am.
All right. All right, so... All right, so to our finance department friends. Yes, they are friends. So, let's list then the changes that we had made.
Okay. All right, so additions? Would be what Craig presented to add back for the sheriff, his expansion items, which totaled $38,873.
$8,873?
Yes, sir. Then money for informers, which was $32,000.
Is this an addition?
That's in the continuation budget.
It's... Yes, it's an addition.
That's informant?
Yes.
How much?
Thirty-two.
Okay.
For the sheriff's department, adding back money for uniforms of $18,100. For the sheriff's department, adding $6,700 for other small equipment. Okay, so this one is a wash. It's an increase and a decrease. So, the increase is for what we call Bull Hole of 7,000... River Run Park? Is that correct?
River Hole. River Bull Hole.
And the increase there would be 7,000 to make their total allocation 10,000. And... But we would be decreasing the Ellis Park Kitchen by that 7,000. So, that's a wash. I'll do the other wash now, too, and that is $650,000 increase for the Westrow and EMS station and a decrease in contingency of $650,000.
Leslie, we also took off that vehicle for the sheriff that was $59,990?
I'm not there yet.
Okay. I was trying to do all the sheriff stuff together.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So, okay. A positive 650 for Westrow and EMS and then reducing that from contingency.
Was the cog, it was the older Americans? The next is an increase for the cog, the older Americans, of $2,000.
Hope you're happy.
Watch.
Um...
I have a conflict with that.
Jim says thank you.
The next is for facilities management. Upgrading an office assistant three to administrative assistant one for $7,918.
Leslie?
Yes, ma'am.
So, is that a reclass?
It is a reclass.
And is that department up for reclass this year?
No.
No? No, ma'am.
What... What does that end?
Facilities management?
The park. Parks and Rec. Item 4134.
Parks. That was Don's.
Expansion budget request.
All right.
The next is the EMS presence in Miller's Ferry area to start in January of $220,000. The next one is a veteran service officer, which would also have a January start, but that would be... The money would be held. We're looking for grant funds, and it must come back to the Board of Commissioners before the money can be spent.
Is that like $28,000?
$28,358. The next was for telecommunications, and it was some overtime money of $36,000. And the county manager is to study options for relief of their situation. That must also come back to the Board of Commissioners before the money can be spent. The last addition is the additional funds needed for the sheriff's pay study. Commissioner Pierce made a very good point that the stipends will be paid this year. They do not affect the budget next year. So, I had originally said $172,000. The amount that we will need now for next year is $118,215.
$118,215?
Yes, sir. So, deletions from the budget. I've already given you the two that are the wash. So, the sheriff vehicle surveillance van, and that's a deletion of $59,990. One that I think the county manager had sent an email about was in special appropriations. We had $25,000 for the fairgrounds, and so we haven't taken that out of the budget yet, so I've removed that. The next one is reducing marketing or branding by $10,000. That's gonna go from $60,000 to $50,000 in the budget. The next item is the jail kitchen flooring, removing it for a reduction of $22,000. We have the delay of the courthouse roof with a reduction of $421,900.
What's that?
The courthouse. $421,900 is what's currently budgeted. And the last is where we had $260,000 in for debt service for renovations at the Crawford building, architect, that kind of thing. We are doing a reduction of $160,000, which we are leaving $100,000 there for a potential parking lot, wall, and also architectural, additional architectural fees for the Crawford building.
How much was that?
$160,000.
Is that... So, does that change from 260 recurring expense to a one-time $100,000 expense?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, those are the changes that I have at this time. So, if everybody's in agreement with those, then we could move on. The last issue that I had that you had mentioned previously was the tax rate.
I have a question for the manager, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just curious as to why the facility management reclass was approved and the request for DSS reclass was not?
It was not in the recommended budget. Neither were in the recommended budget.
Okay, so...
The facilities position was added sometime earlier today by the board, not by... It was not in the recommended budget.
Okay, so my question is, can we add the reclass for DSS now? Can I address that?
Paperwork has been processed through the Human Resources Department and through myself and the county manager for a move.
How much is that position, the facilities manager reclass going to cost?
$7,918. I think from my point of view, the person that everyone would like to be reclassed at DSS, you know, if he goes to another position which he has applied for and it's gone through all the approval processes, I understand the loss at DSS, but he has the ability because the job in information system, it's a higher graded job. He has opportunity to make quite a bit more money there.
Oh, I understand that. And let's say he goes. How are we gonna hire someone that is as capable if we don't reclass?
I can't answer that. All I can say is I think the reason we put the brakes on the reclass is because we've seen the paperwork come through. Now, that's what I know.
Yeah, that... I mean, that was to address the comments, but the Parks and Rec position was not in the recommended budget. As the manager, I did not recommend any position be reclassified unless it was in the sheriff, tax, or election. So... And my recommendation hasn't changed. I still don't recommend the Parks position, but I don't have the authority to vote on the budget. So, I mean...
I'm the one that made the addition, Judy. I'm the one that made the addition, Judy, uh, count, uh, for that, for that position. He did not have it in the budget. I just had that it, I asked that it be added.
What, what was the, uh, amount for your reclassification, Judy?
Five thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. Because most of it's paid by, um, federal.
So the, the two issues, one is the, the person that has the job is, I guess, accepted a better position or a different position in the county, so that person is probably going to leave. So what you're saying is to attract someone at a higher skill set, that you would like that empty position to be reclassified?
Yes.
And that's going to cost 5,342 dollars?
Right. Okay.
Would that typically go through Personnel Committee, the reclass?
It, it certainly could. Uh, you, you know, this is all, I mean, on the DSS thing, it's all hypothetical. You know, there's a lot of assumptions that, you know, there's nobody else within a thirty-mile radius that can do that job and that that person's never coming back and that, that IT's not going to cooperate with social services and help them out. I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, Randy upstairs works for the county. Social Services is a part of the county. We're going to take care of social services. Okay, so...
So whatever the number of hours that social services needs him each week, you're going to direct Randy to send him out there?
Well, it, it may not be that employee because I'm not going to micromanage, um, directors to tell them what employees to send, but I, if, if they're unable to find somebody, I would direct Randy to, to find a way to meet their needs until they can find somebody. Or we can just transfer the position, what I prefer to do, under IT, and we'll just take care of it and, and, and social services won't have to worry about it anymore.
So if you did that, then, um, they'd become an employee of IT, but they would just be located out at social services?
They could be. And that, we would still get the reimbursement and, and that way they wouldn't, you know, have to, uh, to worry about it. I mean, you know, Randy takes care of, you know, all the departments. Sheriff, is your department taken care of by IT? Okay, so Randy's capable of, of taking care of everybody's needs.
Now, I think the way I'd like to see this happen, now that it's been brought to our attention, we're kind of focused, focused on a person. Person is doing work that is outside of his, um, job description. So instead of, you know, what I've heard said is if, you know, I hate to be even talking about this because I don't even know if an interview's taken place and there may, he may not even be selected, right?
He, he has been selected.
It's, it's done. He's no longer there.
Okay, so what I heard was he could get paid twice what he's getting paid for a new job and to that I say, wonderful. That's the way it works is we take jobs at a lower position, at lower money, and we progress, uh, to higher paying jobs with more responsibility. So twice what he was paying or what he was earning, I don't know what that is, but it was 35,000 and he's going to 70, the five, the 5,000 dollars isn't going to save you. We were not, so what I'd like to do, since our HR people are here, is not focus on one specific situation, but let's, let's take a look at that, that job description and see, do we want that to include something else? Right here to save that employee, we need to figure out if that position needs a different job description and that's something that would go through the Personnel Committee, not that would be done here. I, I don't feel. It, is that, you're shaking your head, is that?
I, I might say that, um, Randy took an overall look at several different positions that he considers to be IT liaison positions, is the word that he uses. This position was one of them, but there were several others and he did a, a post-look at several of the directors to go ahead and look at their positions and put together some position, uh, description questionnaires. So yes, that is the process and, um, they, they have done that. Kind of in the overall look that Randy is looking at as far as providing services, IT services to multiple departments. So that was one of them and we could bring that forward and the Personnel Board, please, if you would like.
And, and to be fair to Commissioner Clusman, because she brings up a good question. If we're going to say that for this DSS position, then, um, seems like it's been ten days ago since we had this discussion earlier, but, you know, should we do the same with, was it facilities management? Is this the place to reclass these folks? Not to cut anybody's...
You can always put the money in the budget and the Personnel Board can decide whether to reclass. That way the money's there if you do it. If you don't, it just goes into the budget.
And that's fine with me.
Who, uh?
Uh, I, I, I s- I can, yeah, I agree with what you're saying is that one job should be the same as the other if we're doing it at this point in time, so...
I, what I don't want budget meetings to turn into is folks coming in and asking for raises for their coworkers, for a specific coworker. Those need to be looked at through HR and then passed through Personnel Committee and not done under the spotlight where we have pressure from coworkers to change or, um, is that what, is that fair?
I understand what you're saying and, um, where, wherever this person ends up, to me is not the issue. To me, the issue is that we be able to replace that person with the same quality and, and training and it's not going to happen at where he's, he or she is classified right now.
What, what, what we also don't know though is once we take a fair, studied approach to it, it may be that this job description as it stands now stays the same, but that with Randy's input, um, something happens with IT to make up for that difference in skill that is something we'd rather see than having a person that's full-time in that described position, plus we'd like you to do a little something on the side.
I, I'd be happy to bring in for the Personnel Board various different, various related positions that Randy did put forward, this one was included and you could see all the work that he did do.
Okay, and that's, that's what I'm getting at. So no one wants to leave you guys hanging and so once we can get through this process and then this exercise where we look at the job description for what he has, it may be that we say, we don't want him doing that. We want someone from IT who is actually going to specific training for these things to be, to be the, the assistant and it may or may not be more expensive for us or cheaper for us, but it will be the right one to do. Kind of not do it in this setting.
That's fine.
Can you agree to that?
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me, um, but do I need to, uh, fight for my 7,000 dollars now and then let the Personnel Board take care of the budget later on?
How can we do that? Put that in contingency?
We, you have, um, uh, you have money in contingency already budgeted that can be moved. You have 70,000 that's uncommitted, totally uncommitted, so then we would, i- if it goes through, then we just move it.
I think they're kind of flaky, so I don't know.
He said they're kind of flaky in my personnel board. Yes, that's fine.
Okay, all right.
So removing that, the Parks?
So I'll remove, I'll remove that for the Parks at this time. Okay.
All right. So that is Fund 101, correct?
Correct.
All right, that's the one that we're probably going to spend time on talking about. So do we want to move, uh, do we need to, um, work our way through that? Uh, Leslie, is that, would you recommend we work through that and then talk about tax rate and then after we're done with that, move into fire tax?
Yes, sir.
All right, so the floor's open. The floor's open on, uh, on these changes, if you'd like to discuss any of those and any other changes that you would like to make to what we've talked about since one o'clock today.
There was some discussion about, um, a salary increase for our Director of DSS. I haven't seen that come up in any of this. I'd like to get a clarification on that before we close the budget.
Personnel?
I don't think that's for, uh...
Your, your, your mic's not on.
Oh, you don't?
Should I repeat everything I just said?
No.
Go back, go back to four o'clock.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think, uh, the DSS salary issue is a personnel issue. I think...
I think it is too, that's, but...
I don't think it is.
Which, which one?
Uh, the DSS Director. That's not a Personnel Board, is it? The Board...
It, it could be a closed session.
Yeah.
Probably needs to be discussed in closed session for various reasons.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
All right.
I, I apologize for m- missing that.
That's all right.
So we can have that on the next agenda?
Yes.
What's next?
Um, I'd like to move that, that, uh, we accept the funding, uh, at 50,000 dollars for the PPP program, which is going to be split, my understanding is split between Partners in Learning and, um, and Smart Start.
Can I ask, uh, Amy Brown to come up and just clarify that?
I think you, yeah, go ahead.
Can you repeat it? Having a sidebar conversation.
Um, it was presented before, I can't remember if Norma said it or who said it, but that, that the 50,000 dollars appropriation would be split between Smart Start and Partners in Learning?
I think it's supposed to be between Prevent Child Abuse and Partners in Learning.
Yeah.
Yep. That was my understanding. Is that right, Margaret? Is that what was discussed earlier?
All right, I changed my amendment to what she just said.
By the way, I love your son too. He's great.
You know, I sit on that board and you didn't say a blame thing about me.
I would second that motion.
You just go sit down, okay?
I second that motion.
Partners in Learning and what?
Prevent Child Abuse and Learning.
Yeah. PCAR.
Um, and I'm in favor of, of funding the, uh, community resiliency model. We have, uh, I've been to some, um, meetings with just a whole lot of folks. That's a one-time expenditure. So I, I can, um, I can see us training some folks in that, sending them out, uh, so I'm willing to do that.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Okay, these are already in the budget, so why are we taking them up individually?
I'm just telling you what I'm in favor of.
Oh, okay.
That's all.
Well, then I will make a motion that we add 50,000 dollars, or excuse me, 54,000 dollars to childcare subsidies in our county. So...
So...
So 50,000 is already in the budget, so that would be in addition of 4,000.
Yeah, and that would fund nine children, which is what is on our waiting list for Work First.
For what, for what?
For Work First. So if it's in the budget right now, if somebody asks to take it out...
Unless we ask to, uh, to remove it.
Right.
Yep.
Well, I'll say of the programs that you had mentioned today, I think that I'm in support of, of most of them. I have concerns with the, uh, uh, childcare subsidies because I'm afraid that it's something that, uh, from, from information that, that you presented to us, we're currently not funding that at all. And there's 4,338,172,000 coming from the federal government and 655,120,000 from the state funding. And so I don't know that I have enough information to start funding a program from county money that the federal government and the state government looks like should be funding. As you know, you, usually with some, when something goes in the budget, it kind of stays there. If you take the example of the school system, I think way back when, uh, the agreement was that the states would take care of the school system and, and the county, or, uh, or would take care of the current expense and we would take care of the capital. That's kind of changed over the years and now we spend 30-some million dollars a year on things. It's probably the state's responsibility. So I don't know that, I'm not going to say it's not a, a, a good program and I'm not going to say it's not, maybe not needed. I just don't have enough information on it yet and I, I can't make a decision today on whether or not I could fund that. I just, I'm not sure that that particular part of all the things that you presented today is, uh, a role of county government. I don't know what the other counties are doing, especially counties that are similar to our size. So I don't think I can support that part of your program today. So I'd either, um, want to remove it or move it into contingency until new information can be provided to the commissioners about it and we could revisit it in the future. Uh, but that's one, one of the, the things, that's the only thing that you presented that I'm, I'm not a hundred percent on.
Uh, that, that's the one thing that's giving me heartburn and, uh, Commissioner Clusman and I have talked about it. We've, we've spent a lot of time talking about it. Um, I'm really supportive of these other things and, you know, uh, we certainly, um, love our local kids, but a, a federal program, you know, it's kind of darn if you do, darn if you don't, um, as was explained to us earlier today and also it's Ray, isn't it? She was kind enough to, uh, take our call last week to discuss it. And so those, my, my understanding is, um, you know, we've got to stay within, we, we as a county, as DSS, has to stay within a, roughly a 5 million dollar budget. And so they keep a real close eye on that because if you get at the end of the year and you've overspent, then they have to come up with that difference within their DSS budget, which of course they don't want to because they're strapped for other programs, right? So if they go over, then who has to pay the difference if they don't have it? Well, the county does. So what we understand has happened is other communities frankly have not been as, um, disciplined in sticking with the rules. And so they're spending as much as 140% of budget. So when extra dollars came available, good old Rowan County... So, when extra dollars came available, good old Rowan County, who was living by the rules, didn't get any of that, is that right? So, now the county's being asked to make up for the shortfall, but other communities who didn't stay within that budget got extra money when we really need that. And so, now we're kind of getting asked to, to make up the difference. So, is that about right, what I'm, what I'm saying? Yeah?
Yes, plus with the hurricane, some of the money would have to be allocated down there to help with those families.
So, you know, the old saying about the camel sticking its nose under the tent, you know, us getting involved in a federal program that the federal folks should be taking care of, when, when we step into that, uh, it seems to me like they'll say, well, they'll take care of themselves and we'll move on and give funding to folks who aren't following the rules. And that's, that's not conjecture, that happened to us. So, on a federally funded program like this where we're creating, um, something new, I just... Judy and I talked about that a couple of weeks ago. We've talked about it last week and then, uh, also today. And that's just the one thing that I, I, I can't follow on. I'll, I'll wholeheartedly support the Triple P and the Community Resilience Model, but, uh, not starting a new, um, subsidized program.
Is that a motion?
Here's a motion.
I'll make the motion to remove it from the budget.
Do we have a second? I'll, I'll second that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we vote? I understand your concern about, quote, "starting a new program" that the feds and the state should be funding. You know, it's, it's no different than when the state did away with our mental health institutions and said that they would fully fund, um, all of the folks that needed assistance. Well, you don't have to look very far to see that not only did they not do that, but they continue to cut, year after year, the, uh, funding for people in need. I mean, we're talking about mental health, we're talking about substance abuse, we're talking about ADD.
What's that?
ADD is, um...
Intellectual Disadvantage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And when I look at the amount of poverty that we have in our county, the only way that, I mean, there's three things, three major things that keep people out of work. Transportation, healthcare, but number one is childcare. And we know that we are not gonna get ever a full amount, of help from the federal government. Apparently, the state contributes a little bit, but, um, what do we do to those kids now? We know that childcare from birth to five is an incredible opportunity, especially for children in poverty, to be able to learn and, learn to socialize, learn to, learn empathy, um, and just many social skills, as well as basic reading skills that go with them then to kindergarten. You have a grandson.
I do.
And I have a grandson and a granddaughter. And I will tell you that my grandkids have been read to since the moment they were born and that even at two and a half years old, that they know the letters. I mean, my granddaughter knows the presidents. And they're fortunate because they do not live in poverty. They are in a intact family that love and support them. But when we leave children hanging out there, it only hurts us. It hurts our children and our families. I mean, we, we have worked so hard and had conversations about how can we improve our educational scores? Early childcare is one of the ways that we can do that. When we're looking at trying to reduce our prison population, terrible thing to say, but when those who are planning prisons for the future come into a school and count all the little boys that cannot read at the end of third grade, knowing that they will end up in prison, um, that to me is a travesty. And having enough early childhood care can help stop that pipeline. I wish that every family in this county had an intact family, that they had a job that could support them, that has benefits. Sadly, I don't know of any of our retail organizations that only hire people at 39 hours a week just so they don't have to pay benefits. To me, that's a crime. And what it does is it pushes those families onto public assistance. So, I know that I am not gonna prevail here, but, but I would just beg, beg you all to think about this in the future, to go out and talk with childcare centers, childcare experts. You know, like I said, we've got a 283 child waiting list right now for subsidized childcare. And I'm only asking for nine children to be covered. So, I just hope at some point we can come to an understanding, all of us in this whole community, that affordable childcare, high-quality childcare is for the good of all citizens.
That was really good. Good job. You know, this, this is a lose-lose because, uh, it's like we're arguing against children. We're just not. We have, um, you know, I'd received a, and the more I talk, the, the, the deeper the hole we dig. This is all I'm gonna say. You know, we, we have a tremendous commitment to this community. A lot of money is spent in this community on, on folks that need help. We had 100 and, uh, we have 150 million dollar budget last year, was it more than that? 150 million? So, of 150 million, 27 million of that goes to social services directly out of taxpayer dollars. 27 million. That leaves us 123 million dollars to operate the entire county on. The total budget for social services for Rowan County alone is over 250 million dollars. So, just simply, we can't do it all. But Social Services has over twice the budget that the entire county has, so...
And where does that money come from?
Comes from, uh, federal and state and from local taxpayers. And so, I, I, I just don't want us to, to think that we're not doing something already. We're doing a tremendous amount. And so, you know, maybe we work with, uh, our federal delegation to lay out what the issues are. I've never talked to them about this. Uh, if we're getting money taken from us, uh, in some regard, someone needs to hear about that. Need to understand that. But, um, I don't want to get us in a, a federal program. I'm only one and, um, you know, I've been, I've been consistent on this with you. I appreciate your passion and we, we are, uh, all passionate about that as well, but... Yes, ma'am.
Would it be appropriate for my, for me to withdraw my, my, uh...
On the 50?
Yeah.
54? I mean, that, that's a, you know, that, that's a...
I don't, I don't want us to, I don't want us to argue. And, um, I know that I don't have the support. I know I'm the only one. And I don't want to put you through the vote. But I had to make my point. So, I would like to withdraw my, um, allocation for childcare.
So, you'll have, sorry, but you made a, you made a, uh, motion for 54,000? So, that's separate from the 50,000 that's in here? Because it's different numbers? So, you would have to make a motion actually to remove it from the budget? Because it's in the budget? So, there has to be some vote somewhere for it to come out of the budget?
To remove 54,000?
If it's mine, uh, it's in the budget already? Okay. Well, I guess we do have a...
We got a motion and second on the floor.
Yeah, okay.
I'll call the question.
All right, so, uh, we're gonna leave in 100,000 of the 150,000. And so, we would, uh, we're removing the 150,000 dollar program. We have a motion and second. Question's been called. So, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Um, Judy, um, thank you. Everyone on the board knows your heart. I hope you know our heart. Uh, this is, um...
It's hard.
This is really, really hard. So, um, maybe we can meet and talk about what are the next steps for us to address this issue from, uh, from a different standpoint? And I'll be happy to help you, um, meet with folks and...
Great.
All right? All right. Uh, and thank you for your kindness in this discussion. Because, uh, you know, it's interesting, when we get elected as commissioners, we're required to go to training classes. And in one of the training classes, it's, uh, what, what you do and what you don't do as a commissioner. And they show lots of videos of county commissions and how they go off the rails and how they throw stuff at each other and scream at each other and threaten each other.
And jump over the dais.
And it's, uh, I remember one person taking off a hat and standing up and slinging it at another commissioner. We don't operate that way. And so, uh, we have, we have had, yeah, we have had our disagreements. And, uh, I'm, I'm here to tell you, I think we're, we're still gonna disagree, but we're, we're, we're done with that stuff. We're family and we get along. And, uh, uh, I really, I appreciate Judy Kalusman and, um, you know, what she does for this board. And everyone has their, kind of the thing they're really interested in. And so, that this is a passionate but respectful discussion is a, uh, is a good thing for the community. And so, I appreciate you very much. All right, uh, so what else, what else do we have in 101? Anything else?
I have a question.
What's that?
Just that deduction.
Yeah. Of hers?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Mr. Manager, could you? I had heard from a school official that, uh, we were not gonna be funding school resource officers. And, um, that concerned me that we didn't look at their budget message. Could you explain to me, um, exactly how much they asked for school resource officers?
Well, I'll tell you what I, I'm gonna do. I'm just gonna read the, um, read this part out loud for everybody from the school board. "We continue to use a budget approach with school principals and other budget officers to ensure we use available funds in the most efficient and effective manner. We developed our 2019-2020 local budget to support our renewal school district and to consider proposed state budget increases." Parenthesis, "Governor's budget for salaries and benefits for all employees. Accordingly, we have identified a need for a new funding totaling 2,352,000 from the county as summarized below. Local share, certified staff, 290,000. Classified staff, 113,000. Local share of state budget increases from retirement rate increases, 252,000. Healthcare cost increase from 6,104 to 6,349, 137,000. Enhanced student support services, add two social workers and two nurses, 260,000. Provide security at elementary schools, 300,000. And support increases to classified staff salaries to bring in line with market, 500,000. And fund escalating maintenance costs, 500,000. And that totals the 2,352,000 that they requested." For what appears to be their operation. And I do not see anywhere in here where it mentions school resource officers.
So, they didn't ask us for any money for school resource officers?
This year, in this budget letter, it doesn't appear they did, unless the security at the elementary schools is resource officers, but it doesn't...
Isn't that in capital section?
No, it's in operations, but it doesn't really define what security, uh, security at elementary schools is. So, I don't, I don't know if that is school resource officers or, or, or what that is.
Mr. Manager, I believe Sheriff has some knowledge about that.
I think the, uh, high school and middle school resource officers are fine. That 300,000 for elementary security, what that is, instead of hiring resource officers, they've contracted with deputies and officers from other police agencies to work on an intermittent, about four or five hours a day at elementary schools on a contract basis. And I think that's what they estimated they spent this past year.
Okay.
That's, I think that's what that is, in talking to Dr. Moody right before she left.
Okay, if, if that's the case, if to provide security at elementary schools for 300,000 is for the school resource officers, then this budget does not include that. And if you wanted to dedicate 300,000 for that, there's an additional, um, 150 remaining. Well, with the 50, it was 50,000 just removed?
Yes.
Okay, so, if you took that and the 150 remaining in contingency, that's 200,000. I'm trying to get, that's 300,000 is what they say is for the security at elementary schools. And then you've got another 100,000 dollars. I mean, I can...
Do you think they used all that last year, Sheriff?
Yes, I mean, we put up volunteer sheets at the schools that are in our primary jurisdiction and they get... and they get filled up. And China Grove does the same, Landis, Spencer. They service the schools in their communities.
Do you think they used the whole three hundred thousand last year?
Scott Flowers was here that heads my SROs up and I asked him a number and he said two seventy-two was his guess on what it cost a year to do that. Now, that's his guess versus their guess, so, or I don't know what they used to get to that number.
Gotcha.
There's, there's another fifty thousand in, well, you, you, you want to leave something in contingency, but.
Yes.
And, and the bottom line, I certainly can't speak for the schools, but some money in that is better than none if we don't do it at the level we've been doing it. But off-duty officers, off-duty officers do that four or five hours a day, three to four days, maybe five, depending on the school and what they have going on. And it's kind of a hodgepodge.
And I mentioned to you earlier, I go in to drop my daughter off and I sometimes see officer out there at the car rider line.
At Enidville, yes.
Also, I compliment on, they stopped a few speeders in the, in the school zone, which they kind of fly through there sometimes.
When Dr. Moody and I talked about full-time resource officers at elementary schools, we said, what in the world would they do all day other than provide security, you know, mentor?
Charter schools.
Well, the, the best benefit we've seen is the behavior of the parents when they're on the campus. That's kind of what we've noticed, that that's improved that as much as anything.
So, so, so if, if the board wanted to do three hundred thousand for schools, Leslie just reminded me, because the Rowan Salisbury Schools population's dropping and the Kannapolis and Charter Schools is increasing, we would also have to contribute.
To them.
To them. So if you said three hundred thousand, that doesn't mean Rowan Salisbury Schools would get the total three hundred thousand. I mean, they could, if you wanted to do three hundred thousand, we could do that. But then you would, you'd have to add on top of that what the ADM allocation is for charters and Kannapolis and Charter School.
Let me ask you this, because I think I asked you earlier, and I'll be honest with you, I forgot what you said, but. To eliminate this confusion, because I think, I mean, this is, well, what's going on nowadays? I mean, this is very important to have those funds in there, at least some of them. Is there a way to set this up the same way we set up the supply money? Where it's a separate line item that, you know, they can't use for other things? Or, you know, we just go ahead and fund that and, and each year instead of being part of their normal budget? Or is that going to be too confusing, counterproductive?
Well, it, it, it appears that over however many years, the county has said they're going to give X amount for school supplies and the school systems honored that. But quite frankly, they don't have to, because you're not really allowed to budget that way. You can budget by function and purpose, which you can take function and purpose and manipulate, they, like, manipulate that to a level that may have an influence on where it's spent. But, but technically, you really can't say that, what we, what we're saying, even though we say it and they've honored it, if they didn't honor it and they didn't give the money to the teachers for supplies, I don't really know that we would have any recourse. But is it, I'll let you answer it.
Technically, there are two ways to appropriate funds to the schools. One is lump sum and one is by function and purpose. And that with Rowan Salisbury Schools, we're talking about thirty-six million dollars currently. That doesn't include the classroom supplies, that, those kind of things. So technically, that, that's the way to do it. With the, with the classroom supply money, I mean, they sign a resolution saying that they will give it directly. Their board adopts a resolution every year saying that they'll give it directly to the teachers. And, and that's when we release those funds. But we're, we're outside of the two ways that the state says to appropriate.
It's got to be one way or the other and it can't be both.
Correct.
Yeah, or, now, you can say that, you know, currently there is zero recommended for increased current expense for the schools based on several factors, but one is the decline in population. I mean, we are having a public conversation now that, that, that there may be a desire by the board to put three hundred thousand dollars in there to ensure that security is provided at the elementary schools. If they choose not to do that and say because the board of commissioners didn't fund it, well, that's simply just not true. Even though you technically can't say that, you know, if, if they say that they didn't have the money to fund it, that's just, you know, not true. You can't force them, I mean, you could increase their current expense by three hundred thousand and they could turn around and hire two social workers and two nurses with it. And technically, there's nothing you could do. But you, you would hope they wouldn't do that. But, but technically, they could. So, you know, seeing that we're discussing the three hundred thousand and, you know, Dr. Moody did tell me when she was here earlier, person to person, she said, you, you do understand that that's reducing our school resource officers? And I said, no, I don't understand that. And I did not understand that. And I, and frankly, until I read the letter and the sheriff came up here, I'm just, you know, I'm thinking that may be the case.
That's what she was talking about.
So, so I do think she brought my attention to it. We went back and looked at it. Commissioner, I didn't even think until he asked me and I said, well, let me read it. And I read it again. And that one sentence, provide security at elementary schools, could be school resource officers. Based on the sheriff, it appears that it is. So I can't imagine if you increase that and then two months down the road, the school say, we don't have money for school resource officers, well, you know.
Mike, and the reason we don't do it through payroll, it'd be subject to overtime and it wouldn't be cost-effective. This contract was the cheapest and most economical way to go. And that applies to every police agency involved, not just us. Leslie, just one question, and I mean, you might have already answered it. But they couldn't reimburse the county like Rowan Cabares does for our services? Once they incur the cost, submit the bill and we reimburse them, up to X amount.
We can do that.
We can do that.
Budget analyst.
No, sir.
Can do that.
We, we could do that. Tell them that we would reimburse them for.
Up to whatever you're willing to spend or can spend.
All right, so that's how to do, but we got to find three hundred thousand dollars.
One hundred.
Hundred?
Yeah.
Well, I think, I mean, I'd rather go with what?
Or whatever.
Sheriff's number. I mean, I don't know the schools, they probably rounded it up. I mean, if we need to go to two seventy-five or something, if that helps us. I mean, I don't, I guess the kind of way it works is, you know, people get tired and don't want to come. So it's, if no one signs up, that money just sits there. I mean, there, there could be, at the end of the year, there could be excess funds in there. But I guess you're saying about two seventy-two is what they spent last year.
That's what my, my resort, my main guy that does the resource officer liaison with all the schools. That's what he told me. He thought the number would be two seventy-two. I believe is what flashed up on the phone when he, he did some math and showed it to me.
That helps us.
So where, where's the two hundred coming from now? We, we took back fifty, but where's the other one fifty coming from?
Well, there was, there was eight hundred in contingency, not, not include, not including the rescue squad. We took six fifty.
Got you, yeah.
Based on the, the, the error that we talked about this morning, the first, first thing, or this afternoon. So that leaves the remaining a hundred and fifty contingency that was in that operational school op, you know, line if needed. So that gives you a hundred and fifty. And then the fifty that was just eliminated, if that's not put into the spreadsheet, well, it doesn't matter, I mean, put it in the spreadsheet, either way, there's two hundred. And so you're looking for an additional, how mu, what did you, what did you say, Commissioner?
Seventy-five thousand. Where are we in the pluses?
We can eliminate the income case maintenance worker, I'm just picking.
That's, that's just not even funny, is it? He's got a terrible sense of humor.
Good thing y'all are here.
Terrible sense of humor. Okay. Where, where are we on, hey, Leslie, where are we on our deleted additions and our added subtractions? With, oh, a net decrease of what, one?
One twenty-three, six forty-four.
All right, so could we take seventy-five from that? Mike?
That was, that was including.
The fifty.
I, I put in two hundred and seventy-five thousand for the sheriff's department for school resource officers.
Oh, and we're still down one twenty-three?
Yes, sir.
That includes the two seventy-five.
That includes the two seventy-five plus taking an additional hundred and fifty thousand out of contingency, which is just a move.
Yeah.
For that. And then I had already keyed Judy, the, the adjustment for the childcare subsidies for the fifty thousand.
Can I interrupt, just so you get too deep? We wouldn't be providing all those services. Each police department, so our number wouldn't be that great. I don't have it broken down by China Grove, Landis, and if those entities are willing to do that on the reimbursement. Like Spencer provides it at North Elementary and China Grove Elementary and, and, you know, so on and so forth. And we, we have some of the schools, so we wouldn't get that total reimbursement, but we wouldn't be spending that money either. I mean, or they wouldn't. It would be going, you know, these Salisbury PD, for instance, if they're working elementary schools would bill, if they're willing to do that. We can only do the schools we service.
Well, all of the officers are independent contractors in that case.
That's correct.
And each one of them had to make a decision as to whether they'd be willing to do that.
Correct. Well, but the, but the school system would be paying them as they are now. But they, they would get the reimbursement from the county, back to the government entity, is what I was thinking.
You'd still be hit with overtime if you did that, wouldn't you?
No, they'd be working for the school system and the school system will write them a check. They're all independent, yes, sir, they're all contractors.
How much money are we looking for?
I think she found it already.
Did you find it all, Leslie?
Can, can I, can I just? We've been talking about this for a half hour. For them not to provide those services, I don't think is going to happen. I mean, we're, we're trying to strap two hundred and seventy-five thousand to it. We're going to provide it. If it's not provided, that's, it, it seems to me it's going to be provided. They're asking for it, we're providing it, providing the two hundred and seventy-five thousand. I'm not really concerned that the money will not go towards security for.
Did you, did you find?
Elementary schools.
So you're talking about the way of implementing it? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, all this, because it's got, if it was just going through the sheriff's department, that'd be one thing, but it's got to go through ten municipalities and sheriff department and all that. I'm in, I'm in favor of trusting our elected officials on the other side and.
No, and that's fine, if that's what we need to do. I just want us to somehow make sure that that money is sort of earmarked every year and so we don't run into the same issue. Because I know our budget's been tight today and then all of a sudden we have this kind of surprise here at the end. That going forward, that that's something that's, you know, maybe it's not, saying like we do with the classroom supplies. I'll have it specifically earmarked separate that, all right, we're going to fund that and, you know, you can't use it for whatever else. Now, if they use it for whatever else, then that's going to kind of be on them, but.
Well, Mike, at some point in time, we're going to have to trust them to do the right thing.
Yeah, I, I think what the sheriff said and Leslie said, we can do, we can reimburse them on a monthly basis for their cost.
Schools?
We can.
But just for our part.
If, if we provide the, the labor and the service, yes.
But China Grove and Landis knows things, they don't come through us, so they have to. That's what Greg was saying, he thinks it's just easier.
Oh, oh, oh.
And overturned by the Salisbury, yeah.
I, I, I thought.
When we provided the supplies, didn't we just, didn't we just say this is for supplies?
We did, and, and the teachers knew about it, so they were asking for the money. But, but at the same time, we're going to have to, we've got to develop a better trust level with these guys. I mean, if the, my contingency is, we give it to them with that understanding, they don't spend it on that. Next year, they don't get it. I mean, it's just that simple. I don't think we need to get involved in all this bookkeeping to try to take care of this simple subject here. And like I said, we'll be able to know right away if the, if the officers aren't at the schools, we'll know it. And at that point in time, we can address that issue.
Well, can we, we can just ask them to send us a monthly or whatever, quarterly report?
Yes.
So.
Yes.
You can do that.
Can do that.
So this is going to the addition column for two seventy-five?
And if I could make the suggestion, I, I would round up to the three hundred thousand because giving it directly to the schools, then we also have to give it to.
Keep up with it, yeah.
To, to the other school systems, charter schools and Kannapolis City Schools.
Mike, you want to make a motion?
Sure. Okay. I'll move to add three hundred thousand to the budget for elementary school resource officers.
I second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Sheriff, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a tangential question. Is there any training that the department does for school resource officers?
The full-time officers, it's state mandated now. It's the first year it's been mandated, that we have certain things to do. And the officers that work the schools do not quite have the same authority as a full-time SRO. I know that sounds weird, but they can enforce the laws, but they can't do searches and certain things the same as an SRO that's a full-timer.
So is part of their training sitting in the administrative secretary's office and talking all day?
I would hope not.
Whoops.
We need to have that conversation.
All right, so are we ready to, to move on?
Yeah.
101?
Yeah.
Move on anything.
I'm ready to move home.
You're going to move to your car?
Move to my house.
All right, so I make a motion that we approve Fund 101 with the following additions. The sheriff, there's thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars for. I didn't write down what that equipment. Thirty-two thousand dollars increase for informant, eighteen thousand, one hundred dollars for uniforms, sixty-seven hundred dollars for other small equipment. We'll, we'll move seven thousand dollars into the bull hole. We'll take it from Ellis Park, a reduction of seven thousand dollars there, so that's a wash. Six hundred and fifty thousand dollar for West Rowan EMS. We'll pull that, six fifty from contingency. The two thousand dollars for the older, older Americans event with COG. EMS for Miller's Ferry will begin in January, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to begin that planning process. The VSO, an asterisk will be next to this, the Veteran's Service Office. Twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars will begin in January, assuming grant money's available. Telecommunications, we'll add thirty-six thousand dollars and ask the manager to, to do a study on that. That would begin now or January?
June, July.
July, okay. The sheriff's pay study, there's an increase of one hundred eighteen, one hundred eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. Three hundred thousand dollars to be designated for elementary school resource officers. $300,000 to be designated for elementary school resource officers. In the added subtraction category, never going to let her live that down. We will be reducing the surveillance vehicle outfit, which is $59,990, removing $25,000 from the fairground, reducing Brand Rowan by $10,000, reducing the jail kitchen flooring, or eliminating that, $20,000, $22,000. We'll delay the courthouse roof construction another year, that's $421,900. We will delay the Crawford Building rehab, but leave $100,000 in there for the parking lot, wall construction, and architectural fees. That'll be a one-time event. That should leave us with a reduction in budget of $123,644. Is that correct?
No, I missed percussion, $50,000.
I'm sorry. And then reduce, um- DSS. Childcare by 50,000.
Right. The, the other reduction has been implied, but contingency would be reduced.
Another 150 from contingency.
Right.
All right, does Finance concur with those?
Yes, sir.
Does that sound right? Okay, so I make that in form of a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Are we going to do the tax rate separate?
Separate, yeah.
I'll second that.
All right, so I'll hold on. Will, will we pass this, and then talk tax rate?
Yes, you, you would just be approving these additions and deletions.
All right, we have a motion, a second.
Should we go to 201 next? Wouldn't we want to approve all the funds and then do the tax rate?
I, I think that-
We did 2.
I, I think that Mike's-
Oh, no, no, we're, no, we're going to do the tax rate, we're going to talk about the tax rate in 201.
Okay.
That's right, yes, sir. All right, so we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So then, we're back to the tax rate discussion. We talked a little bit about that in the work session, I believe. It's been a long day, I think that was in the work session. I think we had a number kind of in mind, although it's open for discussion, of going from 66 and 1/4 down to 65 and 3/4. So it, it is a, even though we're struggling through this, this has, I think, been the hardest budget that we've been involved in in the best time. So in order to also give a positive nod to the taxpayers, then providing some sense of tax relief, I think, is important to all of us. So.
You need a motion.
If you're ready to, yeah.
Excuse me, one second. Mr. Chairman, would you, would you just tell the general public what, how much money a half cent is?
Well, I used to think that one penny was a million dollars, but I believe that might be changing. It's 1.2?
Right now, it's 1,300,000.
Wow.
Right at that. So a quarter cent is 325,000, a half cent is 650,000.
Okay.
A lot of times, folks don't understand exactly how much money we're talking about when we talk about a penny here and a penny there.
And so to Finance and to the county manager, is a, is a half cent, is it, is it okay with you all? Is it fit within our budget? Will it leave us still in a good position? If you could comment on that for us?
I, I will say that it, it increases the fund balance appropriation to 11,328, 11, 11,328,000, and with the amount our budget has went up compared to the amount that our fund balance appropriation's going up. It's tight, but it, it will work. There, if, if it were not for the two capital expenditures of 800,000 for EMS and the 650,000, no, 800,000 for the library, and 650,000 for EMS, I would say probably not. But since, since you've got that much one-time capital expense, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, I think it will work. It's tighter than it was, but it, it will work.
I think, I agree. I mean, there's a lot of things that we've, we're able to do, there's some things that we would like to do, we haven't been able to, but I think, you know, we still want to be competitive with our surrounding counties, tax rate-wise. And so I think it still leaves us in a good position, provides more services that the citizens deserve, and some of those folks that probably don't use some of the services that we added, and they're, they're able to have some relief on their, their tax, their tax debt. So, you know, I mean, I think it's a, it's a, a balance. I'm sure we all would love to cut the tax rate even further, but, you know, we've done a lot today, so I think it's probably as good as we're going to be able to get.
I agree with Mr. Caskey. I think that one of the best things we can do is reduce the rate, however small that is. But it also sends a message to those who are looking to relocate here, whether it be business people or homeowners. And, you know, with all that we have accomplished today, plus being able to do that, I, I think it really, you know, we can really hold it up and say, "Look at this, what we've been able to do."
I'd just like to ask Finance, when's the last time we had a tax cut in the county?
Um, hang on, that's going to take me a minute to find. It was also a revale year, but it was quite a few years ago.
It saved Josh some time, if you get that.
I don't think I get enough. Sorry, does it? Because I haven't got it. Okay, so the last time we had an actual decrease was fiscal year 2008. You want the amounts?
No, that's a no.
Okay, 2008.
All right. We, we do have a motion. I've, I don't recall if we've had a second. Do we have a second? All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? All right, so we'll take the tax rate from 66 and 1/4 to 65 and 3/4. Motion a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so then the last thing we'll need to do is go to Fund 201, now that we know kind of what our tax rate will be.
Yeah, the whole.
Do overall proven of the budget now.
For, for Fund 101.
101.
But do we have to do 201 first?
Approve the overall budget.
Well.
But don't we have to do 201?
For, for, for the general fund, for 101.
I thought that's what we just did.
I thought we did 101.
No, that was for the tax increase. I'll make a motion to approve General Fund 101.
We already did, but that's okay. Motion a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I thought you just did the tax rate, I'm sorry. Okay.
It's okay. Maybe I didn't. Just keep voting. Okay, so now we need to talk about the tax, the tax rate. So Mike, what do you want to?
Yeah, the two that I had mentioned earlier, Woodleaf and South Salisbury. So, since we was able to reduce the tax from 60, or half cent, that I would move that we increase those two by half cent over the manager's proposal.
Okay. Y'all follow that?
Second.
All right, so the motion is to increase Woodleaf and South Salisbury, is that right, by half cent? We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Leslie, is there anything else?
So did you approve the overall Fund 201? Okay.
Oh, no, we didn't.
Okay.
Uh, well, yeah, yeah, we did. I, yeah, yeah, we did.
Okay, I'm writing and listening at the same time. You approved the tax rate increase.
For those two, for, for clarity, we'll, we'll approve Fund 201 with the increases to Woodleaf and South Salisbury by a half cent.
Second.
You want to make the motion for that?
Well, she's second.
A second, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
I move adjourned.
Jim, thank, thank you for your work. Leslie, Aaron, thank you. All right, motion adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.